Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, August 17th, and it is 5:30 PM. We have a full dais, and I'm calling this meeting to order. And I would like to counsel jump way over to the second page, citizens' comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizens' comments?
No, Mayor, we do not.
We are already done with page two. We're going to go back to the first page. We're on item two, which is a work session. We'll be covering four items: receive review of the five-year CIP plan, receive briefing on recommended funding for assets and community funding, receive presentation of fees, and receive questions from counsel regarding fiscal year '21-'22. And I -- counsel and staff has prepared, and counsel, you have at your desk the presentation, because they already knew there's some of those numbers that we may say, "I can't read that, I can't read the TV from here." And so you'll have everything that they're presenting tonight is in the packet that you have before you. The other thing that you have at your dais is the printout of any questions that have been asked with the answers. With that, Mr. City Manager, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the mayor just said, the first substantive topic we're going to go over this evening is the -- is an update to the five-year CIP, and I'll ask Fabiola DeCarvallo to walk counsel through that, and she'll highlight the changes to the capital plan that we've proposed since counsel last looked at the capital plan, which was at your May 14 budget workshop or your pre-budget planning session. But before we do that, I want to briefly talk about some general fund budget highlights. And as the mayor said, every slide that we'll present tonight is in the packet that she just described to you. So first, a summary on what we're doing with the tax rate, the total tax rate, what we call the nominal rate, the actual rate that shows up on tax bill. According to my recommended budget, doesn't change, it stays at the same level as for fiscal '21. What does change is the calculation of the no new revenue rate for MNO, which is imposed on -- that calculation is required of us by state law, and the idea is to reflect what is the tax rate that would receive the same amount of ad valorem revenues on property that existed the prior tax year. And so because of the fairly significant increase in appraisals, we're seeing the O and M rate for -- the calculation of the O and M rate for the no new revenue purposes does go down a bit. What we're recommending is that we increase the debt rate, so that the new debt rate is a little over 20 cents per $100 valuation. And the reason we're doing that is to fund a $3.6 million debt issuance, and so that we can fund some needed street rehabilitation work over the next couple of years. And we'll flesh out the timing of that here in just a bit. A little bit more on the tax rate. Again, the total nominal rate stays the same, but because the average homestead taxable value in Bassdrop is increasing from around $210,000 to $226,000, the owner of that hypothetical average valued home will see an increase in taxes they pay to the city of Bassdrop of about 7.8%. And that equates to an actual increase of about $95 on that hypothetical average tax bill. And the total levy citywide is going from 5.7 million to 6.3 million.
And, Mr. City Manager, I'm going to interrupt there. And counsel, let you know that I made a request to the city manager earlier today, and that was, you know, we, as you've read through the budget, we know that there's an increase in the wastewater fee. We know there's an increase in the trash picking up fee. And I asked if staff would provide for us. I'm an average homeowner, and when this budget is approved, these are all of -- this is a summary of all of the increases, so that we have -- we know what an average home payer would go through. So he very much agreed to do that, and I thought it'd be -- it would be good for us as council members to be able to speak to the different things that are going up and why they're going up. So that'll be added in the next time we see the budget package.
And that will reflect an increase in the solid waste fees that is provided for in contract by 5%, and the base rate for wastewater charges are going up $5. So we'll add that, yes, ma'am.
And the water base rate.
That's right. So still under the category of highlights, we are adding two positions in the police department, one position in the fire department, an additional firefighter. We are bolstering our code compliance efforts in building inspections. We are also adding some administrative resources in the planning department, and we are creating a full-time recreation manager position to take on the duties that had been filled by contract for the last year or so. And I alluded this already, the budget, the reason we are proposing the increase in debt service is to leverage a $3.6 million certificate of obligation that would fund street rehabilitation work. We know we want to do Old Austin Highway, and that we have an estimate of $1.6 million. We're going to work through a recommendation for how we spend the rest of that money, and we'll bring -- we'll be bringing that specific back to counsel later. And another budget highlight is the work we're doing to implement the compensation study that counsel approved and saw the results of a few months ago. There is a 2.5% step increase for eligible employees. We are bumping longevity pay. We are adding a certification pay for firefighters. We're adding a shift differential pay for police officers. And we are, I think, responding to a significant need for current employees and an issue in our efforts to recruit employees. We are adding that the city, as an employer, would provide 35% of the cost of dependent care for city employees. And so that's -- those are my budget highlights. And as we segue into Fabiola talking about the CIP, I did want to follow up on a discussion we had with counsel at the May 14 pre-budget planning session. As counsel thinks about the CIP, I'm going to encourage counsel to think about all -- what all of this means from a timing and a planning standpoint over the next couple of years. When you hear Ms. Waldron a little later this evening talk about all of our funding sources, there is a lot of money that we are putting in the future bond category. And this presumes, in our forecasting, presumes that those funds would be made available, a new debt issuance in fiscal '24. People might be asking, "Why does it take so long for us to get to that point?" And I'm attempting to answer that question with this graphic that's on the screen here, and again, in your packet. And as counsel knows, we are doing a lot of important study work in fiscal '22. We're updating the Parks Master Plan. Just last night, the Economic Development Corporation approved a budget that provides some funds, I think $50,000, to do a sports complex feasibility study. We are budgeting to update the paving index. It's best practice to do that every few years, and it's time for us to do that again. Counsel previously studied a comprehensive drainage study, which will inform future capital projects. We've been talking about doing corridor studies in cooperation with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization that targets Chestnut Street, targets the Old Iron Bridge, targets other important transportation corridors in town as well. We think that will inform future capital projects as well. And of course, we're looking to study the possibility of the city's electric utility to go into the broadband business, and so we're going to study our ability to connect to fiber that's in the region. And the EDC agreed to fund that study effort last night as well. So we're doing a lot of study work next year. It'll take us all of fiscal '22 to get those studies done, and so I'm managing expectations here a little bit. What I'm going to suggest we do as a way forward is the next time the counsel meets with me in a pre-budget planning session, which would be in May of '22, if we stay to that calendar, counsel would review the CIP again. That's what we do at those sessions. We would update the fiscal forecast, and I think that would be a good time for us to talk about the creation of a CIP committee or a bond committee. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan says quite a lot about having a citizens' group rank order your capital projects. The information packet we sent to counsel last Thursday includes a description of what we've done very recently to take those, the existing criteria and weights in the existing comprehensive plan and apply them to the projects in our current capital plan. That is 100% a staff effort, but that's not what the Comprehensive Plan envisions. The Comprehensive Plan envisions that that's a community effort, that we put together a citizens' committee, a task force, whatever you want to call it, that helps with all of that. And that's what we were suggesting we do, in that we talk more about what we want that committee to do and what kind of priorities we want them to focus on at the next time we meet in that kind of planning session. And so if that all then happens by around November of '23 is what I would target as a reasonable amount of time to have those study efforts all done, and we would have, as a staff and as a counsel, our hands wrapped around them.
November 23.
I said November 23, and I meant -- no?
It has to be, because the next day is May of '23.
You're right. I'm sorry. That's a typo on the graphic that I didn't catch. Thank you. November of '22, then, and I apologize for not catching that, would be a good time for that bond committee to actually get their work underway, and we would give them a six-month timeframe to come back to counsel in your next pre-budget planning session in May of '23, and have them make a recommendation to the city council on the capital plan and specifically what we would want to fund in that next significant bond issuance. And the kind of projects we're talking about here, counsel, again, just for clarity's sake, is street reconstruction work citywide, maybe we're talking about a sports complex, maybe we're talking about a recreation center, maybe we're talking about a pool, and drainage improvements that, again, would be informed by that comprehensive drainage study. And that would give counsel time to call a bond election by state law. I think it's 60 days, maybe it's 90 days, but I think it's 60 days before the election you would need to call the election, set the propositions and that sort of thing, and approve a CIP. So there's a lot of future decisions that need to get made, and certainly, we're not asking counsel to make these decisions. It'll be a future counsel that makes that final decision to call a bond election and decide what projects to put on it. It's up to that future counsel to even decide whether to have the bond election. Unless state law changes, you still will have the ability to issue certificates of obligation, but as we know, there's a chance that state law may not allow that by the time we're making these decisions. But I don't say all that to suggest that the reason to have -- that you would do COs if you had that ability. There are a lot of reasons to get the citizens involved in a process here. And again, I think that's consistent with the language in the existing Comprehensive Plan. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage for that long-term planning thinking, counsel. And if, unless counsel says otherwise, we'll continue to think along those lines as we proceed.
Paul, I think it's also November of '23. It's fiscal year '24, but it's November of '23, because it'd be six months after May of '23.
What November are we talking about?
The one, the very last one. I don't think it's November of '24.
It is November of '23.
I think it's November of '23.
That's fiscal '24?
Yeah, but that's November of '23.
And that's the exact confusion I was trying to prevent. But that's fiscal '24, but that's November of '23. Thank you very much.
So the idea of this fiscal year '22 that we're talking about, where this budget would approve funding for a lot of those master plans, and then it would be November of '23 when the public would have an opportunity to weigh in on funding those things or not funding those things. I think it's really important that the city manager pointed out that although currently we can do some bonds without an election, other bonds you have to have an election, there will be another session, and it is wise to plan that after another legislative session, we may not have the ability to issue any debt without an election. I'd rather you guys have the plan for an election, whether you need it or not, and not be scrambling. So I thought it was really a great idea for staff and the city manager to lay this out. So thank you for the summary.
Thank you, counsel. And I'm going to hand the clicker off to Fabiola.
So Mayor, council members, and city manager, as you recall, on May 11, I presented to you this draft capital improvement program, where I presented details of each of the projects, the details of each project, and you're going to pack it tonight. And also, as you recall, on May 14, we presented the projects again, and we gathered great input from you, and we used those input to revise the draft capital improvement program. And what you'll see tonight is the revised draft CIP based on your input and also additional review from city staff. As a, just a reminder, this is a five-year projection between fiscal year 2022 and 2026. The fiscal year 2022 is considered the capital budget, and these projects that you'll see tonight includes construction, major rehabilitation, improvement projects, and also studies. So I'll go over the projects again, but just provide you with some highlights of the changes that were made in the list, on the list. So on the drainage projects, the riverbank and stabilization and the Gills Branch flood mitigation projects, unfortunately, we did not get the grant, and so these projects are now estimated to be in fiscal year 2024. The drainage master plan, after another review on the CIP list, we realized this project was previously funded, and this project's now on fiscal year 2021. On the cemetery projects, we have made no changes, so this project stays the same. So this is the cemetery improvements that includes erosion control, street improvements, and Section 9 development. On the electric and BP&amp;L projects, the only change here is the, on the Bassdrop Power and Light capital improvements, we made a change on the budget that increased a little bit from $150,000 to $208,250. This increase is because of some money left over on fiscal year 2021 that's now carrying over to fiscal year 2022. We have made no changes on the fiber optic network expansion. On the facility projects, unfortunately, we also did not get the grant for the new fire station. This project is now on, for the fiscal, estimated to be on fiscal year 2024. The new recreation center building, it's for fiscal year 2024, and as you may recall, this, we also had the sports complex visibility study as part of this project, so now this visibility study is not going to be part of this project, and the sports complex visibility study is estimated to be for fiscal year 2022. We have made no changes on the facilities' master plan. So moving on, the facility CIP projects, developing the GIS database, we realized that that was not a CIP project, so we removed that from the list. And there has been no change on the asset management, the Comprehensive Plan update, and downtown lighting projects. So now on the parks and recreation projects, the parks and recreation master plan, we now including the sports complex visibility study, and because of that, the budget we increased in $50,000. So it moved from $100,000 to $150,000 because of the sports complex visibility study.
Fabiola, I'm sorry, back a couple, on the fact that the GIS database was not a CIP, is it funded someplace else in the budget?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I think that's important to note. It's not CIP, but it's still funded.
Yes. Okay. So then, the sports complex visibility study is now part of the parks and recreation master plan. The Pine Street amphitheater, it was removed from the CIP list, and we have made no changes on the playground equipment replacement. On the transportation projects, the street maintenance program also had a budgeting change from $325,000 to $420,000. That's also because of some money left over from fiscal year 2021 going out of 2022. The Wilson Willow Loop, we're still waiting on the grant application we submitted, and the same for the Old Iron Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The Agnes Road Extension, great news, we received a grant for the, from the Community Development Block Grant mitigation program, and we are moving forward with this project. This is now for fiscal year 2022 and going to fiscal year 2023. The Old Austin Highway Rehabilitation is now on fiscal year 2022. There is additional funding that will be used in other projects that have not been identified yet. Moving on, on the transportation projects, so on this list, the only change is the last bullet, so there's been no change on the Blakely Lane Extension, sidewalk connectivity, the street reconstruction program, and the transportation master plan. There's been no change on those. The only change on this slide is on the road extension biannual project. This is a new project that was added to the list, and this is to address concerns from citizens and also to make sure that we connect streets that lack that connectivity. We don't have the scope of work or limits of work established at this point. On the water project, there has been no change on either of these projects, Pine Street Water Main Improvements, Bassdrop Sims Borough Aquifer Water Supply Facilities, Willow Water Treatment Plant Rehabilitation, SCADA Central Location, Riverwood Water Rehabilitation. Made no changes on these projects. And the same for the wastewater projects, the West Side Collection System Phase One, Transfer Lift Station in Forest Main, joint participation in CIP, wastewater master plan, and West Side Collection System Phase Two. We made no changes on these. So with that, I'll pass it on to the, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Waldron.
Okay, so these are just the summary pages they have changed, the May 14 pages that you received. I do want to make one correction on fiscal '22. The bond should not be 4 million, it's 3.6, and it comes from a correction on the street reconstruction CIP project, should be 2 million, not 2.4 million. The rest of the changes on this spreadsheet really are just the grants that were unfunded. All of those projects have been bumped and moved to fiscal '24, assuming that they would have to be a part of a bond election. So that's really the major change in the general fund. Water wastewater, I don't think there's really any major changes. Most of the projects are early on in fiscal '22 and '23, the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. We're still working with estimates on the water plant, too, so those numbers may still move in the near future. The electric fund is just the difference that she talked about earlier with the carryover from fiscal '21. Cemetery fund had no changes.
Counsel, we're about to move on from the CIP and change subjects and talk about support, funding for community assets and support groups. Should we pause and see if there are questions about the capital plan?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I have one quick question. I shouldn't know this, but I'm getting older. But anyway, Loop 150, isn't that responsibility of Tech Dot?
Yes, sir, it is. We think it makes sense for us to, in coordination with Tech Dot, and Tech Dot needs to be at the table, and we've had some preliminary conversations, well, more than preliminary conversations, with the MPO, where they would lead and lead the funding of a corridor study for Chestnut and including the Old Iron Bridge, and have that study effort lead to becoming a project on the COGS Transportation Improvement Plan, which we think helps us in the ultimate eligibility of funding for improvements on that corridor, including the Old Iron Bridge. Yes, sir.
And on, and I don't know, Tracy will tell me whether or not this qualifies for CIP, but when we talked about the Main Street area before in my notes from our May 14 meeting, it was, if we're going to be making those improvements to Main Street, speakers. We talked about having speakers for music during festivals, for having emergency, if, God forbid, there's ever a shelter in place or whatever, and we talked about, we wouldn't be playing music all the time and making people crazy, but we could have Christmas music during Christmas time and patriotic music while the -- and I would think if we're messing with lighting and messing with trees and down there doing all the conduit and stuff, that it's never going to be cheaper than to just do it at the same time. And we all know, as council members, all we have to do is walk through the exhibit hall at TML, and we come out smarter. And we know that those speaker systems are not extremely costly, and their Wi-Fi, they can tie in with your emergencies. So if we're talking about future funding, and I thought that was something that we discussed in May, I would like to see that be a part of the scope, counsel. Are you guys okay with that? And, you know, maybe we can find a grant or whatever, but I appreciate that the Main Street Board had a goal of outlining the lights and the buildings and the tree lights, but I think those speakers would be of no harm and useful for years.
Good evening. I am here this evening to discuss community funding and community support group funding. So first, we're going to discuss our asset funding. We built out charts to make it easy, so this chart's on page 63. I know these numbers get a little tiny on us. Have included the fiscal year '20 approved funding. Just a reminder, that was the last year we had kind of a robust budget in the hot fund. We included the fiscal year '21 approved funding, and we did a request, at counsel's request, for the assets to carry over, what funding they were able to, from canceled COVID programming, and they did so. So you'll see our financial year '21 approved funding was much less than it normally is. We included fiscal year '22 requested funding, and then the staff proposed funding, along with the percentage of total operating funds requested and also proposed. And just a reminder, this is simply a staff recommendation. It is up to you guys if you'd like to fund their entire request or reduce the request. We're happy to put it in as y'all see fit.
Ms. Gleason, is there a reason why you kept Bassdrop Opera House whole, but everybody else was cut?
So So we set out with the proposed fiscal year 20 approved funding, except for the Opera House, which actually asked for less than they asked for in fiscal year 20.
Okay. So that, so they had, they reduced, and that's their total number, and that was the logic behind that?
Correct.
And I did the math, counsel, and that, the, what staff's recommending, and as Ms. Gleason's saying, it's just a staff recommendation. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it's just numbers. That's $30,635. And when we think about the, the visitor center, that's, it's, that's very definitely something that they're, they take care of, that we are not doing. That's the first people that everyone sees, everyone talks about. That's where they go, the Toads in Town, that's where they go to the museum. So I'm happy to entertain comments from anybody else. But for $30,635, I think we should fund them at what they requested. Anybody got thoughts on that? Any, Councilmember Crouch, if you'll turn your mic on, other people can hear you.
Yes, I, I agree with what you're saying. I think that's the first source of information that people, when they come into town, go there first. And if anybody could use some more funding, it would, it would be them, if we could, if we could do that.
Now I'm doing it, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Rogers?
I totally agree with what you said about the Visitor Center. I do have concerns about the Lost Pines Art Center. Only going by the quarterly reports that they give us, you know, when they come to see us. It's the one, it's the one of the four that, at least in my mind, doesn't give me how many visitors they give over last year. So I'm not really seeing that increase in visitors. And maybe that's just from the lack of their reporting to us. They could have them, and I just don't know. But it just seems like we're giving them almost, we're giving them more than we're giving the museum. And I think the museum, you know, brings more visitors to town than they do. So I'm a little bit, I don't understand why they're getting 85 and the museum gets 59, which I know the museum only requested 68, but.
Right. I think they, again, they, I think they went to the fiscal year 20 just to, to come up with a number. So, and I think you're making good points, Councilmember Rogers. Would you want it, are you comfortable with 85 for them? Or do you want to go to something between 65 and 85? Or what number do you have in mind?
I was thinking more of the 65, you know? That's just kind of where I was thinking. And I know that they're now getting support from renting part of the building out to the, the.
Art Institute?
Institute. So they have a little bit more funding than the rest of these people have to, to run their place. But that's just my opinion. I mean, I'd like to see them more, I guess, more reporting on how their visitors are coming. I know that when our, when the, when me and Councilmember Ennis sat on the financial committee that you assigned us to, I believe they were having trouble getting reports from some of these. They weren't always turning them in on time. So I think Tracy solved that problem hopefully going forward. But that would be my recommendation.
Okay. So counsel, I'm doing higher level math here, so let's, I, I am saying 126, 905 for the Visitor Center. Is everybody cool with that? Anybody opposed to that? And then if you add the museum at 68, 338, and the Opera House at 118, 806, you're at 314, 049. And if we tried to, let's just say for staff purposes, they were at 373, just to kind of keep things even, you know what I mean? Let's do that. This calculator's weird. I'm trying to see what the difference is, what that difference would be for. Has anybody else already done the math? 373, 00. Nice, 314, oh.
That would leave 50, right at $59,000.
59.
If the, if the intent was to provide a total of $373,000, if I did the math right, and if you funded the Visitor Center at 126 and change, and the Historical Society at 68 and change, what they requested, and the Opera House the same, that would leave just under $59,000.
And I got the same thing. So what if we, what if we rounded that up to 60? And they're getting the message? And if they, in their quarterly reports, and we see how hot funds do, we can always go back and add some money to them.
I have a question. Is there a reason why we just don't do straight numbers, like 126,000 and 68,000?
Because we told them to sharpen their pencils, and I think they went to the exact number.
Why we're making it hard on Tracy to make it all the way down to a dollar instead of just rounding them up? I just was curious if that has, that was a rule.
I think they all tried to be really careful about, no, they're not round, you know? We ask them to sharpen pencils. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes. In referencing what Councilmember Rogers was saying, I think for this next year, we're going to have a standardized reporting system. Did I hear that correctly? So I think that might help. Because we'll have a, a report that all of them can follow. And hopefully in doing that, we'll get some better results. And I think that'll resolve what you're asking. They'll, they'll be on the same par with whoever else, whatever the other organizations are doing.
So what number are you recommending for the Art Center?
No, I, I didn't have anything for the Art Center to recommend. I'm just saying, and getting the reporting together for that.
Right. So they'll be in the quarterly report, and we'll get consistent reports from all of them?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, counsel, so to, to your point of they were in round numbers, they're, they're the only organization. Well, I guess this last time, they asked $89,516. But prior to that, they've been pretty much round numbers. Would you be okay with just rounding up to 60, Councilmember Rogers? Are you guys okay with 60 down there? And with the, I mean, they're, they're hearing the conversation. We can convey to them, maybe if they have more programs, if they can show us more. But the other part of it is they certainly are having some assistance with the leasing of that building that has not been in place before. And Councilmember Rogers, I think that was kind of your point, correct? We, we want them to be successful. They are one of our assets. But do those numbers make sense, Ms. Waldron?
So I just want to be clear. We're taking the requested funding amount for all the other three organizations. And then we're putting 60,000 for Lost Pines Art. Okay.
That's what I think.
Just wanted to.
No, I, that's, I'm glad you asked. And counsel, would you be willing to entertain if they came back in their next quarterly report and had some reasons of exactly what they would do with extra funds? We'll take a look at our hot funds and see where we are?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay. I don't want them.
Because the more they improve, the more the hot funds will improve.
Bingo.
So I mean, if they, if they start bringing in visitors, then we'll see it. And the hot funds, you know, it's going to start showing the cash in the hot funds.
Sure.
Kitty or bucket, or whatever you guys call it.
The kitty bucket. All right. Okay. So we have done assets. Yay.
All right. Onto community support funding. Again, these numbers get tiny, so you'll find it on page 49 of your packet. Hopefully that will help along with the supporting documentation. We looked at several different criteria this year. And again, this is simply our proposal, and we're happy to change what is necessary. The first looked at was Mission to City Services. We have some organizations that actually directly support the city services that we provide, such as emergency services. So we weighted that a little bit heavier. We looked at the percentage of their operating fund. The lower the percentage, the healthier the organization. We looked at their explanation for the additional funding they requested. And we looked at the number of city residents served, as well as their funding from last year.
Okay. Hold on to your socks, because I've gotten preword that I think got several that we want to talk about. Do you guys want to start with the first one? Or do we want to, do we want to go in order, or do we want to go back? Because the one I want to talk about the most is the Bassdrop County First Responders. Their request for $17,277 was based on radios. And I don't want to fund a portion of a radio. So I think there should be $17,277.
I agree. They're asking for a certain purpose and a certain dollar amount for that purpose, so.
Yeah. And it's, it's a one-time deal. And they honestly, they've had such an excellent record of, you know, like they asked for the money for the trailer, it immediately got put into use. And if you were at the Patriotic Festival, if you were at the rodeo, you see it being used, and it's immediately helping the community.
Yeah, the public sees it.
Okay. So that, that's that number. Then the next thing that I want to ask you guys, if you look back at fiscal year 20, you'll see we were at 129. Fiscal year 21, we were at 120. And I, I would, I personally think, knowing everything that we're trying to say grace over, I'm very pleased that staff's not recommending $187,000. I don't think that's what we should be doing with these funds. And I think it might be helpful if we talk about what kind of number are we trying to get to as a total? Because that'll help us work back to the number of organizations that we have. So are you guys wanting to be in the 130 range, the 120 range?
I'd like to see us at the 125 range. Because I know that listening to Mr. Hoffman going forward, you know, we're looking at debt coming up, that I'd much rather start with some of this funding, start asking them to tighten their, tighten their belts. Because we're having, we're going to have to tighten our belts the next two, two years looking forward. So I'd like to stay under the 125 if we could.
Everybody, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Crouch? Councilmember Jackson, I could see him trying for the button.
Those, those organizations provide such need for the community and everything. I'd hate to cut back too much. I mean, I know we're going more than we had before. But the 129 to the 130 is what I would prefer. But I'll go along with whatever the, you know, the consensus of the council is. But I think they're very worthy as, or, you know, all the organizations that apply with us. But these, this particular group of community support groups really need the funding for the services they provide.
I think when I was kind of figuring it, a lot of them would only lose $500. So it wasn't a big cut to any particular one. It was just a little bit on each. So, and I totally agree with you. They are totally all deserving it. They all do a fabulous job.
Right. And $500 goes a long way with some of them.
Well, it's also important to note that some of these that we're talking about were 1% of their total budget. So it's not, money is money. $500 goes a long way. But some of them have seen some increases in the donations and gifts that they got through COVID. Folks that weren't traveling were donating to some of these organizations. So, okay, I, I hear all of us saying the 135 is probably higher than where we want to be.
Yes. I, I think, I think, I think we need to strive toward consistency. And so that doesn't fluctuate from year to year. And there, there can create some realistic expectations between not only us, but also, also the assets, or the funders. Yep. I like the 125 number.
All right. Well, let's, how do you guys want to do this? We've got, I'm, I'm open to suggestions there. And kind of to Councilmember Jackson's point, there's any one of these, I wouldn't, if, if I was just made of money, I'd write them a check for $135,000 to each and every one of the organizations. So that, that's, it's just a fiduciary responsibility thing that we're trying to, that we're all trying to balance and do something that we can be comfortable with.
Right. And I was suggesting 130, not 135, though.
Okay. But so we're all agreeing 135 is too high. So now it's just a matter of how much and who we're going to cut. Does anyone want to take a stab at it?
Well, I kind of noticed there's a few of them that we're, we're giving them exactly what they asked for. Not counting the First Responders, which I totally agree with the radios. But like Habitat for Humanity, they requested 15. We're giving them 15, which, there's not very many that we did that. The other one is Long Term Recovery is 10,000. We're giving 10,000, which some asked for 14. We gave them 10. So I didn't quite understand the, the logic behind some of them. That was just.
Sure. I think we were really just, number one, trying to not have a huge increase over their funding from the previous year. So that way, those organizations that did ask for an increase in funding, that they just saw a little increase in funding. I think we also were really, spoke to us the number of city residents served and how they were served. And the Austin Habitat for Humanity did a massive amount of work for a handful of city residents. So while the number wasn't large, they did like big, big support. And so I think we were just looking at that. But as with the other proposals, it's whatever council's discretion would like to be.
So on Austin Habitat, has anyone got a number they feel comfortable with?
Well, we gave them 12 the year before.
Want to go to 12? Everybody okay with that?
I am good.
Okay. The Child Welfare Board, that's been a 2, 2, 2, 2, 2. And 18%. I remember Judge Fritz saying they had gotten substantial donations. So you guys okay with leaving them at 2? Okay. And the Food Pantry, that's been the same for several years. You want to keep it the same?
Should remain the same.
Okay. And then the, the First Responders, we talked about going to what they asked for, right? The 17, 277. The Bassdrop County Long Term Recovery Team, we've done 10 for many years.
Maintain consistency.
Okay. So you want to stick with 10?
We're never going to get it 125 this way, guys.
I was thinking the same thing, Councilmember Rogers.
I think we might.
I think he may have done math ahead. The Crisis Center, the, for me, the Pregnancy Center, the CASA, the Children's Advocacy Center, those organizations have a whole lot in common. So we, and over the years, if you look back at '20 and '21, you see that a lot of the numbers are the, are the same for, for those organizations, for some consistency. So somebody give me a number for the Crisis Center.
I was going to 95.
9,500? Anybody object to that? We'll do math at the end, and we can come back through if we have to. The Pregnancy Center?
I was taking them to 75.
7,500? The Children's Advocacy Center?
I figured eight, but I'm the only one talking, so I don't know if I should shut up.
So.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that eight figure. That's, that's above what they received last year, and.
Well, if you look down, they, the Advocacy Center at eight, before, we've done all of those next group, all at the same number. So are you going to have all of them at eight?
I had went to 65 for the rest. That's what I had on my Wolfie's paper, but, but Lyle's got the calculator.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see them at, at eight and see what the numbers vary out toward the bottom.
Okay. So if the Children's Advocacy Center's at eight, then what do you have Combined Community Action at?
Oh, I thought he was saying eight for all of those.
That's what I thought.
Eight? I don't think y'all are good at math. I think we're going the wrong way.
Let's, let's see what happens.
Okay. So do you have eight all the way down to the bottom of the page?
I do.
Okay. Have you done the math, Tracy? Okay.
Does that include Pines and Prairies?
No. Pines and Prairies is.
Can we discuss Feed the Need? That's a 5% increase of what they received last year.
You said eight all the way down?
I, I recognize that.
We just know what you say, Council, Mayor Protemnason.
I'm just going by what they requested. And so the eight is, is a, I think is a viable number there.
On what, on Feed the Need?
But they, but they requested 59% of their budget.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to do the math.
I think they also mentioned that they had a significant increase in services and all the need. Well, there, I think I remember that in the presentation.
I believe their request wanted to open up some corporate funding that they currently utilize to open sites in other communities. So if, I believe, and I, I'd kind of like a second from Waldron, but I believe we get to 123, 962.
I have 131.
I have 131, 962.
Well, that sounds more. Well, that sounds more, I would take her number over my number.
You missed one of the eights. You just missed one of the eights.
Two against one, I think.
Yeah. So I'm at 131,962, which is over the 125, but well within what Councilmember Jackson was wanting us to get to. So...
Yeah, and I, I kind of agree with Councilmember Jackson on around the 1, 130. I know we'd like to take some more off, but all, all of these groups are doing a ton of work for a little, a little bit of money. And I'm with, I'm with Doc on the 130, I think.
So are you guys okay with 131,962?
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Peterson, yes? Councilmember Rogers? Mayor Protem Nelson?
I'm agreeing with you. It's, we made an improvement.
Well, if we left the two, the Feed the Need and the Hands Above, Hands Up High Ministry at the 75, and the seven, like the, like the staff had requested, we'd be more close to the 130 that Doc Jackson asked for.
What's your number, Tracy?
We've saved $3,355 is the bottom line, so...
It's better than it was.
It's better than it was. Anybody opposed to 131,962? Do we need to keep talking about it, or do we, are we okay at 131,962? We've spent 18 seconds on the treatment plan when we approved it, so. Everybody's okay? Everybody's okay? All right. Tracy, you got numbers? All right.
Thank you.
And we can go through all these other pages. So that gets us to...
Gets us to fees.
Fees. Fees are a hot mess. I'm just going on record. They are a hot mess. I just, I, Councilmember Jackson, I just found my first, when I made a pass through, I was at 132,130. So there you are. And we're all, all close together. All right. Staff, let's talk about fees.
So, just kind of give a brief intro into the fees. So this isn't a comprehensive fee review. A lot of this is reorganization of the fees. There are some tweaking to the fees. But for the building fees, we kind of did more of a comprehensive review back in 2017 and '18, because the fees back then had not been updated in about, I think it was 15 years. And then with the zoning and planning fees, those got updated in 2019, right before the B-3 code got adopted. And at that time, the planning director and both the assistant city managers did kind of take a deep dive into looking at the actual cost of service with all the reviews that were going to be required to be done to make sure we were comprehensively looking at everything. They created some base fees. So that's what we're, we're looking at, and then tweaks to those fees and reorganization, but not, we have not done a full-scale deep dive into these fees this time, so.
And I appreciate that as a kickoff. And council, if you're looking at your budget book, the fees start on page 149. And Mr. City Manager, maybe at one of our next council meetings, or when you get a chance, because your staff has hardly anything else going on, I would appreciate a strategy from you with setting reasonable expectations of doing a deep dive through these fees. Because council, I'm sure I'm not the only one that noticed on page 149, we have a fee for a fax charge local per page, and I wrote next to it, "Seriously?" Like, when is the last time somebody's come to us and asked us to fax something? But then it made sense, since it was from the 1995 code. So I, I think that some of the frustration and questions that I have is, it's really hard to tell, like, is this fee on top of that fee, and which fees go together? So I, I think kind of a deep dive on the fees wouldn't be harmful. But I, there's also not a point in asking you 29 million questions when we know, yes, they need to be gone over. So if you could maybe have some time with staff to come up with a strategy for that, I think that would be helpful. Is that cool? All right.
It turned on. Okay. So some of these fee organizations, this was here when I was here in '95, speaking of '95. And so as time went on, what happened was they would just add a new one, and they'd just add a new one, and wait, we need that for residential and commercial one. So what I did to begin with is place all of the commercial permits together, and all of the residential permits together. So that if you're doing commercial work, this is where all of your fees are. So it makes it a little difficult for you to follow it in the, the fee schedule, because there's so many strikeouts, and a lot of those strikeouts are just relocations. So we organized it, though, by classification type. So once it gets cleaned up and printed, it'll be very easy to find and, and find what you're looking for in the fee for it. The second thing is, when I first came, one of the tasks that I was first tasked with the, the city manager from, that was a concern of the councils, was the certificate of occupancies. Because they were $285, no matter what you were doing. And so we created, the common term for it is just RCO verification. If you're just changing your tenant, or you're changing the leasing, or something, then we have this $75 fee to go in and just ensure that the fire extinguishers are up to date, that the lights are out in the exit signs, that you've not created a hazard with travel. And so we now have that, and it's, the process for that is going very smoothly, and we're having a lot of people come in. Every week, it seems I'm doing one or two certificate of occupancies. And we've redesigned our certificate of occupancies, so now they look nice to hang on your wall, with a gold city seal on them, and, and wording that you can actually read, and so that we hope people are actually more proud to put those up. So that's the second thing on the list. Another one of the areas that I had people concerned about was our commercial, new, new commercial construction had only two categories. Are you building less than a million dollars? You're building more than a million dollars. And so I have now separated that out, created one that is for projects that are $50,000 or less for some of our small mom and pop shops that are doing remodels. Then they have, and we set a base fee for that, for $1,000, so they know how to budget for that. And so it's more equitable now. The million dollar project and the $5 million project have not changed much. When you look at them in cost comparison, just a few thousand dollars, and most of that is due to the next item on the list, which is an increase in new construction inspection fees for commercial and residential. Both of those were at 35% of the permit fee, and I've increased that to 45%, and that's mainly to cover the cost of our third-party inspectors. So that we are not losing money. I don't necessarily think we need to be making a lot of money, but we don't need to be losing money on our third party. It needs to pay for itself. Another new category is this accessory structure non-habitable.
Can you tell me what page we can see the increase from 35 to 45?
That is going to be just below the classification fee, and if you hold on just a second.
Page 154, at least.
Yes, 154.
154.
And for the residential, it's going to be on page 156.
Thank you. That's the one I was looking for.
So, and I apologize for not having that page number on there.
No, no, you're fine.
So accessory structure for non-habitable, this is for carports at apartment complexes, that type thing. It's not a building, but it's not a remodel or an addition, or, so it's just an accessory structure, not necessarily an accessory building. And we set that fee at $200. That's based on the fact that it's going to take probably two inspections. Each of those inspections for a commercial project is $95. So there's the nice round number for Councilmember Rogers, that likes nice round numbers. It's at $200 instead of 180. For accessory buildings for commercial and residential, we've added a new category. They, the building code and the residential code do not have building requirements for accessory buildings under 120 square feet. So I added a category for that. The price for that permit will be $75, because that is going to require one inspection, oh, well, 95 and 75 respectively. That's one inspection to make sure that it's sitting off the property line and meets our zoning requirements. Then the other two categories, the 160, 120 to 160 and the 160 and above, those fees are then respective, based on the number of inspections, either two or three. When you looked at our residential remodel, when I started looking at that, we had a remodel for a kitchen bathroom, we had a remodel for a, for a residential restroom, bathroom, residential kitchen, residential other, but we had nothing for a total residential remodel. So you would have to get a permit for your bathroom, you get a permit for your kitchen, you get a permit for, and it just, so nowadays, we have a lot of people who are moving in, buying these houses, our existing housing stock built in the '40s, the '50s, the '60s, and totally remodeling the entire structure, and bringing that up to current. And so this now is a $500 fee, so that we can recoup that cost of doing inspections and, and make it easier on them to just have to have one.
Okay, hang on. That's on the bottom of page 155.
Yes, ma'am.
And these fees are not the trade fees?
No, ma'am.
So this is structural inspection?
Trade fees basically are not really covering, there are trade fees for residential, covers one inspection, but they usually get three or four, but two of those are done at the time we're doing building framing and building final, which is also, this will help cover. So when you balance out all of the inspections with the trades and the construction, it's going to come out.
Come out higher, come out lower?
No, it covers the cost, basically covers the cost.
Okay. And, and it has a, I see that you changed from 25 to $75, residential miscellaneous inspections. What's a miscellaneous inspection?
That's when you're doing something that is not in this category, and we will have, we have those. Let's say that you're just replacing the columns on your porch. Well, that's not a structure, it's not a remodel, it's not a, an addition, it's just replacing columns. That would be an other.
Okay.
And that's, $75 is one inspection. We pay 65, we, we, and then 10 for our administrative. So commercial inspections are 95 each, and our residential are 75.
And then do they pay a 5% administrative fee on top of that?
Because we still have to process the plan review, we still have to do staff time to process the permit, print the permit, schedule the inspections, yes. And when you're looking at, at $75, 5% is, yeah, not very much. So our trade permits, which are on page 156 and 158, if you look at the old language, it was kind of confusing as to what that first permit was, which is an attachment permit. The attachment permit means that you have a new building permit, and this is the trade that attaches to that. The reason they need a separate one, so we can verify their insurance and ensure that they're licensed. And, but we want all the inspections on the main permit, so that the builder can keep track to make sure that all of his inspections are done, and that we're not missing one, or that he's not getting ahead, which will cause a failure. So all the inspections are listed on the main permit, but we attach. It gets, it makes life a little easier in the construction world, when you don't try to keep up with four or five permits. You can just keep them all at one together. So we clarified the language there. On any of the trade permits, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, we did no fee increases. Then additional permit changes where we raised, as I said, we've raised, the ones that we did raise, we've raised to cover the cost of inspections. There were a few of them that actually went down to just one inspection. I believe a couple of the commercial ones went down about $10 or $15. And then we did nothing to the fee, fees in new and commercial remodeled categories. Those fees were exactly the same, they were just reorganized. Any on the building before I go?
Yeah. The residential water heater replacement, many of us on this council remember the discussion about residential water heaters replacements. And it wasn't an accident that there was no 5% fee on it, and it wasn't an accident that it was $50. So council, are we okay with that going to 75?
I'll, I will tell you, historically, they were not, when I came, they were not eliminating the 5% fee on those. There was, it was...
Well, they should have been when you came, because this council voted very clearly that, that was a very specific discussion about water heaters, and, and the, the deal was, it shouldn't be that hard. And if, if it's expensive and hard to get, then they're not going to ask for them. And what we really wanted was houses not blowing up because the gas line to the water heater, that, that really what we were trying to do was make sure that the gas wasn't leaking and causing a problem for the house.
I'd prefer to state it where it was, but that's, you know. I did have a question. You were saying that 75, there's 10, the third-party charges us 65, so we have 10 over to cover the administrative.
That's for, if they have a reinspection, if they have anything like that, we, we still have the additional fees. And we have processing of, of their paperwork, and, and back and forth, and training and all that, and it kind of covers that other third-party stuff that we do with them.
You're saying that extra $10? Okay, and I understand that. But then now you're telling me you got that extra $10 plus 5%.
5% on some of them, yes. On, on all of them, yes, ma'am, if you do not want them on some.
So you really can't do it for the $15, for the extra $10? Is that what you're saying?
We can't, ma'am.
Okay, so you're saying the third-party costs 65, your permit is 75, so that gives you $10 for administrative stuff, but then you want another 5% on top of that? Is that what you're saying, right?
That's, that's, yes. That's, so that, I, I don't want to take it all in one place or the other. Does that make sense? I don't want it to be like, we're charging more administrative to cover everything, and we're charging, I, I want it to be more, more equitable, so that it's not a big burden on any...
I wasn't, no, I'm fine with it. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying. There's 10, $10 of that, 75 is for administrative, and then we need another 5% to help cover it. I just want, I want to make sure I was understanding what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And, and like I said, it, it's at your pleasure. What, what, I, I will tell you, we are starting to get more permits, more inspections for the water heaters, for the air conditioner changeouts, because we weren't getting, I can't tell you the number of water heater changeouts we were getting before I came. I couldn't find any particular, because they weren't, they weren't even reporting them. Even at $50, we weren't getting, I think we could have probably given them away, and some of them, they just don't want to take. They're harder because the scheduling. When you, when you call for a water heater replacement, you're in and out in, in three or four hours, and then to, to come back to get your permit. So we, I'm working really hard to say, you don't have to call that one in in 24 hours. If it's something that's an emergency, like a water heater, or if it's something like we had a gas test at Maxine's, call me, we'll come down and do them right away, instead of you having to call it in, wait the 24 hours for our third party to get there. So we're, we're trying to work with them to get them to go ahead and purchase their permits and get the inspections, instead of thinking, it's going to be an extra day for me to come back down here for an inspection. So we're trying to work really, really hard with that.
Well, then that means then that you're not getting charged the $65.
Well, no, if I call the inspector, he, he's been dropping like Daryl with Maxine's, he dropped everything and said, "I'll go do that one right now. It's not on my list. We're going to go do it."
Okay, I misunderstood. You said, "Call me." I thought you meant you were going and doing them.
No, no, call me, and I will call our third party, because he'll get out for me, where he won't necessarily get out for some of the others. If he gets for me and I say, "Daryl, can you get this done, and please go ahead and put it on your list?" Which throws his schedule off, and, and he has to drive, he may be somewhere else in, out of route. So we're trying to work really hard with the tradespeople to get them to do, to call in and trust us that we're going to do what, what you want us to do, and we're trying to help you, and we're trying to service, serve you, and protect you in some instances. So we're working really hard with the tradespeople. It's been a lax area, I believe, in trust between the trades, more than it has the contractors.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, I think I understand the buffer on the $75, $65 issue. I also...
issue. I also understand the administrative fee and see the need for that, but can you explain to me what a permit technology fee is per permit?
That's to pay for the software.
So every, every, every permit also carries a six-dollar fee?
To pay for the soft, the rental and update and maintenance in, of the software program.
So we have a fee, we have a five percent markup, and we have a six-dollar flat fee.
And that, you can address more than me, because I've asked the same question.
Yes, and this was, this was all how the fees were structured in two thousand and nineteen, is that's when all of those, that different, those different categories got put in to cover those specific, and start to track those different things, how much the administration, just, because we're trying to cover not just staff time in the planning department and building department, but there's also reviews outside, because all this money just goes into the general fund. So we always like to talk about, we're covering not just planning cost service, we're covering the cost of service of the organization citywide. So that seventy-five dollars may cover our inspection, but there's also coordination when that permit came in with BPNL to make sure if it was in their service territory, if they had any issues before that permit got issued. So there's a lot of different moving parts on each permit, that there's a lot of contact citywide on those, so that's what the fees were intended to cover.
So if somebody gets a reinspection fee, do they get to pay the technology fee again and the five percent again?
No.
So that's been fixed, because it wasn't like that whenever you would go into MyGov and apply, and then get timed out, and then apply again, it would charge you the six-dollar every time?
No, it shows it did, but you only paid it once, at the end.
Say that again?
You only pay it once, because you're only billed at once, and if anything's on there, she charges only six dollars one time per permit. We ensure that before we issue your invoice for your permit.
Okay, so that's been fixed, because it wasn't like that.
So.
Would it not be clear just to say a seventy-five dollar fee is now an eighty-one dollar fee, which is inclusive of the technology fee? I mean, I'm just trying to, it's, in my, in my mind, it's somewhat misleading to say a permit costs seventy-five dollars, when in actuality, it costs seventy-five dollars plus six dollars plus five percent.
And is the five percent on the seventy-five or the eighty-one?
Seventy-five.
It just seems like we're nickel and diming them.
Yes.
And it would, it just seems like we're, I would much rather know, like Lyle says, that I'd much rather pay the eighty-five dollars than you tell me this, and I go to that gate and it charged me three dollars, and I go to the ride and it tells me five more dollars, I just feel like, just tell me upfront how much it's going to cost me.
I can go.
So is there a way to figure that out?
So is that, and I know, how are you doing on that fee study? Are y'all done yet?
I'm just.
What do other cities do? Because what it feels like is the, come to so-and-so destination for your ninety-nine-dollar room, and you pay one hundred and thirty-seven dollars to check out, and you thought it was a ninety-nine-dollar room, and you know, well, there's a local fee, and it's like your cellphone bill that has ninety-seven fees on it, and it just start, I'm not saying that the money's not justified, and we all know that, council, it is not fair for a taxpayer who's not replacing their water heater and not remodeling their house to bear the cost of the fact that Mayor Protim Nelson's remodeling his house every month. So we, we know we want the right people to, you know, we're trying to make sure that we put it in the right place, but it's just, you know, the first rattle out of the box, it, it feels like we're nickel and diming people to death. And if it's eighty-five bucks, and it's eighty-five bucks, and the reinspection fee's seventy bucks, and we're done, it might be, it might be clearer.
Would you like me to put that, to change these and incorporate that? I will be happy to do that, to change, and then we'll change all of the categories and include that in every, throughout my whole department. I do, I do not have a problem doing that, I just want to know what yours is, and by the way, we need to talk Mr. Nelson if you're remodeling every month, because I don't believe you pulled the permit, but other than that.
You know, and, and again, as the mayor said, I'm in complete agreement, I understand the fees, we don't want to burden our citizens with, with somebody else's cost and what all this, the messaging, I just think it sends the wrong message, to say seventy-five bucks, oh, yeah, plus five percent, oh, yeah, plus six bucks, so.
I tell you, our technicians would be happier.
So are you suggesting that we look at that in the comprehensive fee review? Not tonight, but?
Well, that's the bigger question. That's a big change to try to make for the budget and have ready to go September first, that's what he's politely trying to say to us.
Just breaking the.
But it's still, well, I agree with what he's saying, not to give it by September first, but shouldn't, the money should almost be the same, it's just the wording of getting it done.
Right.
So can you have it done by tomorrow?
We could have parenthetical eighty-one dollar, right? Something next to it, maybe? It's an easy fix.
So would you like for me to do this, maybe not wait until the comprehensive budget, but you give me a timeline on when you would like to have this done, and we can bring it back at whatever time and go ahead and adopt the fees.
I think you should talk to your city manager, and he should come back to us.
And you decide what you want me to do. Well, I'm looking at him when I say that, so.
Mr. Hoffman?
So, yes, certainly, if the objective is to do the, do the math, it's not, not real hard math, to include the administrative fee and the technology fee into the applicable fees, and instead of a seventy-five-dollar charge, make it eighty-six or whatever the math is.
Eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, but please don't make it eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Can I make an extra quarter, make it eighty-five? Thank you.
And that, that's not so hard, and, and we can, we can do that. I, I will, I'll make a quick comment. You know, there's, there's a, I don't, I don't think we sent, I don't think we're sending the message that we're nickel and diming. We're, we're working pretty hard these last few months to recreate the relationship, if you will, with the contracting and, and trade community. The, we've put a lot of effort into making sure that everyone knows what the rules are and, and how we, how we apply them, including how, how fees work. I, I, I get that the fee, the comprehensive fee ordinance is a, is a jumbled-up mess, but in the day-to-day workings of the administration of the permits and the permit processing, I, I really don't think we're catching people by surprise with the, the five percent admin fee or the six percent technology fee. I think that's all, I think that's all out there. And so just, just wanted to try to create that, that perspective. And, yeah, I don't think we need to, to complete the deep dive in order for us to take the message here from council that you'd like to see something simpler in the fee schedule that doesn't have all of those categories. Yeah, I, I think by the time you, you guys adopt a budget, certainly by the time we produce a final printed budget, I think we can work on making that simple.
And I appreciate that, I don't think we're not being transparent, I think it's pretty clear what all the fees are, but it's just, there, there seems to be a lot of line items. And that technology fee, we started charging it before we bought the MyGov software, now we have the software, we're encouraging people to utilize the software, and are we charging six dollars on each and every single permit that we issue, every trade permit, every remodel, that, that's a lot of money.
So the fifteen thousand permits that were on our last quarterly report, every one of them had a six-dollar fee on it?
Sure, and I, and I think that covers our overall technology cost. Some of it is allocated straight to MyGov, but we do have a lot of technology as a whole.
GIS and other stuff?
Everything out there, yeah, and truly, it's, it's okay to generate funds to cover that cost.
So that deep dive, and, and again, I'm not, not at all objecting to council's direction here that we try to make things simpler, that deep dive, that it will take us a while to work through, and the, the primary reason, I think, why it would take us a long time to work that through is we need to update that, that whole cost of service thing. I appreciate what Jennifer said earlier, I think she has a good handle on this, there's, there's the direct cost that you can pretty easily see and aren't hard to quantify, but there's, there's a lot of indirect cost, there's, there's a lot of support that goes into making the, the planning department work, a lot of salaries in a lot of different departments, and, and it's been a few years since the city has done that kind of sophisticated cost of service analysis, and we, we should do that, and it'll, that's, and that, that will be a significant work effort, and it'll take us a little bit of time, and the other thing we need to do with that is, is look at the market and see what other cities like us are, are charging as well. It's been a while since we've done that, and by cities like us, I don't mean necessarily cities our size, but cities that are dealing with a lot of growth, cities that are contracting out, plan review, and inspections like we are. A big part of what we're dealing with now is that we, we did change the model of how we provide these services, and we're, I think we've done a pretty good job of mirroring how we are charged for those things with the fees, but again, that's just dealing with the, the more direct cost, not at all the indirect cost, and we, we ought to take a look at that, and we ought to have a policy discussion with council about that, just, I'm, I'm not suggesting the, the general tax base shouldn't cover some of this. Joe citizen benefits from us making sure there's a safe city, and so there's, there's a, there's a number there somewhere that the tax base ought to pay for, and, and we can look at some models there and bring something back for council to look at, certainly can.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Councilmember Rogers?
I didn't, I, I understand what you're saying about the, the beginning of that, of your statement about them, the contractors understanding all these different things, but the residents don't understand that, they don't do, and that's where I think, at least for me, I think that's where who sees the nickel-diming, because they're the ones that pick up the phone bill and see the nickel and dime, but the contractors are used to all of it, but the resident, the Joe guy on the street is not used to that.
Well, and to, and to that point, councilmember Rogers, if you're, if you're buying a new home, it's rolled into the cost of your house.
Right.
They, they pass that straight on through, which was why we specifically said for the water heater, it's just, it's going to cost me X amount of dollars from a water heater, so.
Right. The, the one that will be, the two categories that will be more difficult to absorb, the five percent is a straight across, is going to be when we look at our new, the new construction, because it's based on the category of fifty thousand, you know, up to five hundred thousand dollars, and it's kind of hard to, because we don't know exactly what that fee is going to be, so we'll, we'll do some talking.
And you guys can come back with a recommendation, because when it's major new home construction like that, like I said, it gets rolled into the price of the house, and so.
Exactly, so the new construction ones, the rest of them are all a set fee, so they will be much easier.
And I guess, council, the other thing that I'm, I'm finding myself, because I was like, what do you mean, we charge for a fax? There's however many, page one forty-nine to page one seventy-five of fees, but you don't charge every single one of those. There, there's probably two pages that you use on a regular basis, and it's extra long, like you said, because of all the crossouts and stuff, so, yeah, I think we all, we all know generally what we're trying to do here. Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation.
That's fine, I have one more slide.
Okay.
I have absorbed the fire fees that are dealing with building construction, the plan review, the inspections of fire alarms, fire sprinklers, and the plan review and inspection of those are now under the building, and so that it makes it go smoother. And so I have amended the fees, page one sixty-four and one sixty-five. The new fee schedule you see is taken directly out of the third-party contract, and so it's no additional, it's just exactly what they're charging us.
So the six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is a number that starts a lot? It's six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, is that the cost of the remodel, the cost of the fire alarm?
The cost of the, the construction value, that's.
It doesn't say that anywhere.
I know, but that's, just like all the others, it's the construction value on the new construction, that five hundred to five hundred thousand, it's the same basic, it's a setup.
And six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to a quarter of a million dollars seems like a pretty big jump for the same four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That's, that, I took it, as I said, I took it right out, right off of the contract of what they had sent to us that we approved to do for a third party.
Okay.
It's exactly copied it word for word out of the contract. In fact, I didn't even copy, I just did a cut and paste, and directly out of their We are going to be looking, when their contract, when it's time for renewal of contracts, we are, we are going to see how it's working to use that, that company, and we have other companies that we're talking to, to make sure that we're getting the best price. This is one we had, you know, we had an emergency and we already had a contract with them, so.
And I, I guess this is still under fire on page one sixty-six, this festival fair and operational permit, is that in addition to the special events permit?
All I did was the ones that are highlighted, the ones that are marked out. The others I did not change, that's still under Chief Andres.
My question kind of goes along with yours on one sixty-four, the hundred dollars for the final, the fire final under the CO, is that on top of the regular CO inspection, or do you, only if you have fire extinguishers or fire, I don't know?
That's for, that's not in the verification program, that is just for if it's a certificate of occupancy where they're doing a full range with inspecting firewalls, with inspecting everything. The CO verification for the new tenant, Lisi, the fire and building is all in that seventy-five dollars.
Oh, okay.
This is just, that one that you're looking at is for the fire department when they do something separate and under their category. Like I said, I only did the fire alarm, fire sprinklers, the rest of this is theirs, and I talked to the chief about whether he wanted me to bring something forward on his, and he said he was fine with them, and just to change the ones that applied to me, so.
So I guess your question goes to the chief then, on that inspection.
So, so I'm happy to, to review these as well as part of what we're fixing to do here real quick.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Joe.
And talk to the chief, I'll take care of that.
Any other questions for the building or the fire? I'll turn it over to Jennifer then.
So the next section of fees is for the planning, more of the planning-related fees, so they were kind of broken down. Our appendix fourteen, the appendix mirrors the municipal code, is how it's laid out. So again, we, we changed the fees right ahead of changing the B-three code, and then didn't get that circle back around to revising the fees to match up with the B-three code as adopted. So that's what, part of what we're doing now is taking those fees and putting them in the order that the B-three code is, and moving them all into the appendix fourteen, which coincides with where the B-three code is adopted in the municipal code. So the first section is the subdivision fees, so these are things related to subdivision and land development. Main thing in there was we clarified a lot of the names of the fees to match the new processes, and we've also added some fees for smaller projects, because we had kind of a one-size-fits-all fee, so like a public improvement plan was for, if you're doing a brand-new subdivision, sometimes we have people to come in and they're doing, they just need to extend just one water line, or just a sewer line, so we scaled down the fee to address those smaller projects.
So what would those fees be?
The fees would be, so for a single improvement, or a public improvement plan amendment, where you've got to go in and change an already-approved public improvement plan, the fee dropped from the five thousand dollars to one thousand two hundred and seventy-five, and basically that equates to one, one full review and then check to make sure you did, made all the corrections through the development review committee process.
So the public improvement plan review fee that's on page one seventy-two, is it, for some people, it's still five thousand dollars?
Yes, that's, so if, when you're doing a new sub, new section of the colony, and they're doing a public improvement plan that involves water, wastewater, drainage, streets, all of those things that our engineer and public works and BPNL everyone has to look at, it's that five thousand dollars, but when it's just a single improvement, so maybe all you've got to do is go in and build a new street, so we've got to look at the drainage in the street, it's that, kind of that single.
But the amendment to a big plan is also down?
Yes.
Okay.
Because some, a lot of times it's, you've got to amend the drainage, it maybe changes a few street alignments, but it's. changes a few street alignments, but it's not changing the entire plan, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Um, for zoning fees is the next section. Um, we revised the names to match the new B3 code processes, that's probably where a lot of them changed, um, more significantly so. We previously had our standard zoning was what we called a rezoning application, um, that's now called a zoning concept scheme in the B3 code. Um, and we've, have broken that out a little bit too. And then we had a, for special district creation, we called it consent agreements, which not all special districts are consent agreements, so it was just some wording that we were making sure matched up with our municipal code. Um, we also, there's a few things that didn't get reviewed during the last, um, uh, fee update, was the, in, uh, we did increase a couple fees to cover the cost of service. The first is a B3 code text amendment. So this is if someone has a specific code section they want to change and they are gonna recommend their own language and bring that forward for consideration. Um, we had that in our, on, on our code previously at $250. Um, this, we raised that to $2,000 plus professional fees because this is gonna require staff review, it's could possibly require legal review because you're asking for an actual text change to the code. The other one is the comprehensive plan amendment, which is similarly, it's your, it's an applicant requesting a change to our adopted comprehensive plan.
Um, and I'm sorry I didn't catch, this didn't catch you sooner, but on your special district creation?
Mm-hmm.
I, I understand what you're saying, but you also list WCIDs as one of the possible special districts, but on page 168, we call out separately, um, application of a water control district as $10,000, so you need to eliminate that fee. It's on page 168 under the subtitle Creation of Water Districts. From 1995.
That's a different appendix, which is why she didn't catch it.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we gotta, I'm, I'm trying to help.
Yes.
Ms. Bills, after you finish making that note, I have a question for you back on 173. Can you tell me what the difference is at the top of 173? The difference between public improvement plan amendment review and a public improvement plan agreement review?
I might have accidentally, there's a, a little- Oh, so the public improvement plan agreement review is, that's the, that's the, all the PIPAs, as we like to call them, that come forward, for, uh, for council approval on the consent agenda, that's the actual legal agreement, um, that covers how they're, um, going to, um, do the construction of the, construction and the fiscal agreements for the construction of that subdivision. So that comes in when you're going through the entire preliminary and final plat process.
Just maybe what I'm missing is that, that in, in, what you have in red says, uh, $1,275 and then, then below it it's $3,000.
This is an amendment.
Understand, or, which, which, okay, I, okay.
So the first, right, the- The intention is the first one costs $3,000 and then if you wanna make a big amendment to it, then it's 1,275? Is that what you intended or not?
No, so there's a public improvement plan review, which is the 5,000 plus professional fees. And then there's a public improvement plan amendment, so there's, and this, we, we someday intend, when we do some code amendments, intend to change the language because this is, the PIPA and the PIP are very confusing to everyone.
Clearly.
Some people, some previous, previous planning people thought it was clever. Um, but the, so a PIP, a, the public improvement plan is the, um, the document, the actual plans that you're gonna give the contractor, go out and build.
Construction drawings.
It's a set of construction drawings.
Construction drawings, yes. The public improvement plan agreement is the legal document that sets forth, um, how they're, uh, going to construct it, who's, who's responsible for making sure the improvements get done and the, um, performance and maintenance, uh, fiscal that's provided during that process.
It's agreement.
That's an agreement, so that's a, that's a legal document, the other one's actual construction plans.
Good.
And then the amendment is to the construction plans.
So, we might wanna just call them construction plans? Everybody okay? All right.
Um, and then we also had a, in this, the zoning category, a couple decreases. Um, one was for zoning concept schemes for less than 3.4 acres, so these are more, you're gonna be your single lot, kinda smaller developments, infill developments, um, that are requesting a zoning change, uh, because we have a flat fee for a zoning change, which is the zoning concept scheme, so we've broken them out as, uh, under 3.4 acres and 3.4 acres and greater. Uh, where we get the 3.4 acres is that is one building block, so that's where, so anything smaller than a bastrop building block would qualify for the, the reduced fee. And the logic behind that is there is, um, less review for a single property than an entire new block and usually a full development.
Yep.
And then also the zoning verification letter, I think there was, um, there was, it was duplicated in a couple spots, um, and so it was at 250 and we decided to reduce that to 150, looking at the, the level of work that's going in those.
On page 173, it was 50 bucks.
Yeah, and so the-
Oh, so some places it was 50, some places it was 250?
It was 250, yeah.
Okay.
So we reduced it to 150 after we reviewed the, the level of, usually that's how it's someone, when they're selling a property, needs to know what their zoning is, we have to go back through, um, the maps, the ordinances and verify their zoning and sometimes when their site was built and those kind of details. And then sign fees, so the main, uh, I think happening with the sign fees is that we realigned the new names in the B3 code sign section, um, with the, uh, categories that were already in the fee schedule. So a lot of the fees stayed the same, uh, but we renamed, so there are structural signs, uh, building signs that go on, were previously called, called wall signs in the fees. Um, those are your signs that are, your channel letter signs, your, uh, bigger signs that go on the walls of the buildings that you see from the street. And then we had large freestanding signs, which those are your pylon and your monument signs, and those are the same as the previous freestanding sign fees. And then also we lined up the banner permit, uh, sign fees to go with the two-week timeframe that, uh, the code was, that they get, um, well, these are for actual, this isn't the plaza, this is on individual buildings. So individual buildings are supposed to, their, their time limit is you can have one sign up for two weeks at a time for a maximum of two months a year, so that's what that fee is for, so. And then, um, decreasing the fees, so for some of the smaller non-structural building signs, those are your, um, um, nameplate signs, uh, your window signs, um, those kind of smaller signs, we reduced that fee because there's not, um, there's usually no building review involved in those, there are more planning review. And then small freestanding signs and sidewalk signs, we were, it was under the base fee of freestanding signs and we've reduced that down to $50.
As long as that, that small freestanding sidewalk sign that's 50 bucks, is it 50 bucks as long as the sign's in good shape?
Yep.
Can I replace the same sign and I don't have to come get a new permit? Say, just, I had to replace it because somebody ran over it?
Uh, this time we're, I would say no, so if it's, it's, because it's the sign structure that we're looking at, so, and our plan is to get a sticker, and that we can stick on the underside somewhere, so then our code enforcement knows that it's permitted.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, councilmember Rogers?
All right, I have a, um, a question. You used to, in the old fee schedule, there was, you had to get another permit if your sign was a lighting, lighting of the sign or something, is that correct?
Uh, under the previous sign, there was, I think, three categories or four, the wall signs, freestanding signs, there was repair, reface-
Right.
-which that's if you're actually changing the face of the sign.
Right.
Lighting, there was not a separate fee for.
Okay. I don't remember, someone just complained to me once-
That gets wrapped into the-
Because he had a sign permit, then he had to get a permit for lighting his sign, so I was just curious.
Well, we have had some people that they don't, at the time they come in with the permit, they don't have the lighting figured out and they've come back in separately for the, they, they separated the two components.
So is there a lighting, I didn't see a lighting sign.
We discharged the sign fee because we had to review the same information again.
Oh, so they just have to pay the sign fee again, okay, that makes sense. And the only thing I, I kinda, you guys can just tell me I'm stupid, but to ask for a variance, I understand the $3,500.
Mm-hmm.
If it was a big signed master plan of a big, you know, like a big convenience store and they have 100 plans, but if it was just one guy over here on the side of the road and he wants to ask for a variance, you're asking me to pay $3,500 when my sign fee's only 100 bucks, so.
That's because it's, uh, the sign variance goes through the zoning board of adjustment and that's a legal process, um, that we have to follow the state code on, so that requires notification, um, it requires making sure we follow the process and have what's called findings of fact that we get those done and sometimes we have to have legal, uh, review those documents and also come to the meeting, so it's to cover.
Does the staff have a point that they can make some adjustments? I mean, a lot of the B3 codes, there's, there's a level that the staff can do.
A little leeway?
So we do have it, so that's the, on the new fees, so in the B3 code we do have, it's called an administrative sign variance and, um, staff does have some leeway in approving, there's some, some, some criteria for approving it and one of those criteria is that they, the applicant has to make the some part of the sign or the site come closer into compliance, so it doesn't have to be 100% in compliance, um, for what they're asking for that variance for, but it has to, um, become closer into compliance. So if you already, so if you have an existing sign that's falling apart and you really need it, you wanna replace it, but we don't allow it to be, you know, 70 feet tall anymore, but you come in and you're like, okay, it's gonna be 50 feet tall, our limit's 35 feet tall, um, you, we could, the sign administrator can approve that variance.
For a thousand dollars.
For a thousand dollars.
For my $200 sign.
How'd you come up with the $1,000?
Um, just, it's still gonna be, have to be staff review, we still have to do the findings of fact, um, and compare against, um, it usually requires site visits to look at the, the situation on the site. I will say for sign variances, especially to ZBA, that there's a lot of legwork usually that goes in.
Okay. I guess it'd be cheaper to buy a better sign.
And then the other new fee we created was an offer of a sign repair with, not a billboard, so we have an allowance in the code to repair, um, billboards of, you know, if, if it's up to 50% of the cost of the billboard, um, but we didn't have a fee for reviewing that. So these are your large billboards on the side of the road, we've had cases where, uh, windstorm came that through and blew it down and we had to review the cost, make sure it wasn't exceeding that 50% to then review the structural drawings, so. Uh, some other new fees, or new fee categories, so the neighborhood regulating plan in the B3 code was a brand-new creation of the B3 codes, there was no fee listed in our code. Um, so-
So it was free?
Well, it was, so we do have a other, miscellaneous plan review fee, um, in our code, um, but, so for the neighborhood regulating plan, this does go through everyone on the DRC reviews and gets input because this is kind of at the, the beginning of a, of a development, looking at, um, multiple buildings, lots that are gonna go in, uh, and that, that layout that's gonna happen for that. So we set that at $1,000. So it's not as, probably not covering, uh, because we've already kind of established our base review for, one review through the DRC is at 1,275, so this is still a little cheaper than that, because it is a new process, we're trying to, um, get people through, through that process and get them used to it, so. And then, um, a few, I guess I put this in two places, the increased fees to reflect the cost of service, then we did decrease, uh, one fee was the easement vacation, um, with the, the process that's established, um, at, kind of, just general practice through state law. Vacations of right-ofways have to come to city council and I think that's what we had originally based the fee on of the 1,700. Easement vacations, which are public utility easements or drainage easements, only have to go through, they can go through an administrative process, uh, so we reduced that fee to reflect-
So does right-ofway have to be posted or it just has to come to council?
It has to come to council and usually involves, um, whoever's requesting that right-ofway to pay for it as well, so we have to do some kind of appraisal or assessment of the, the cost of that. So there's more work that goes into a right-ofway than, um, there's still, for the easement vacation, we have to write up legal documents, go get it recorded at the county, so there's still, check with all the utilities, there's still a lot of work goes into it, but not quite as much as having to do all that work plus coming to council. And then, um, the last fee for the planning fees was the special event mobile food vendor permit fee. So we, uh, established an additional fee, so this goes for mobile food vendors that are going in, that are attached to a special event, that will be there for that, whatever that timeframe of the event is, and so, um, our, right now our temporary vendor fee is $350, so this would reduce it from 350 to $100. And part of-
Well, but the 350's for three days.
Three days and that's-
And but sometimes the event's only one day and they had to buy a $350 permit, so this lets them, if you're, if you wanna sell tacos at the patriotic festival, it's $100.
Yes. And, and, and also usually for the special event, you're gonna have multiple trucks there, so we're able to do the inspections all, you know, in the same kind of time versus these temporary ones that just come in and out randomly, we have to still inspect them one by one, so.
So council, while we're, thank you very much, that's a really good explanation and I think that's, that's a, a fair thing, but I do wanna talk about, um, some of the other mobile truck fees as well. Councilmember Jackson?
That's what I was gonna ask about, um, if it's a mobile truck instead of being food, what type of fees, because, um, some of those vendors that were at some of these special events don't have food, but they have a, a truck, a vendor truck.
Well, the, then, then they're a vendor, individual peddler solicitor, right?
Yeah, it's on 165.
On 159.
159.
159, I think.
159.
Because that $100 fee for the mobile food truck is when it's food. If it's not food, then they're just a-
Oh, okay, okay, I see now.
Yeah, so-
I was thinking, because with homecoming, I thought that the, the way they were explaining it to me was that it was other vendors that weren't food, but I see now with the other fee, okay.
So, um, council, on the bottom of page 159, the mobile food court is $400 for six months and $600 for the year and council, we, uh, approved that in February of 20 and, um, uh, just for a reminder and keep me honest, um, staff, the mobile food court, that means that somebody else has bathrooms, somebody else has a water source, somebody else has the picnic tables, so there, you're pulling into a spot that's kind of custom-made for a, a mobile food hookup and that's why of all of the mobile food, with the exception of bringing your truck to a special event, that's the cheapest of all the fees, correct?
That's right, because the owner of that site's invested into the property and it's a destination for food trucks.
And accessory to primary use versus temporary mobile food, what's the, remind us of the difference between those two?
So accessory to a primary use is, um, a vendor that's going to be on the site, kind of semi-permanently, they can be there more than four hours, um, a day, so that's kind of where you see a mobile food that sometimes will go alongside, like, in the parking lot of a gas station and it's there every day. Um, a temporary food truck is one that actually is going to move around every, um, they can't stay in one place for more than four hours. So that would be your vendor that's gonna go to different job sites and sell, sell lunch or your ice cream truck, things that are gonna be parking in the right-ofway usually and moving on versus, um, a vendor that's going to be associated with, um, an existing business and using those restrooms and, um, being associated with that parking area usually.
So if somebody wants to have a business that's in a truck and they move around a lot and it's less than four hours and if they were at a special event, it would cost them $100, we have three-day and three months, it, um, but we don't have, what if they're in town and that's, that's what they do for a living for all year? We don't, they would have to pay the three-month four times, the way that we, the way that we approve the fees.
Yes.
So, um, and the other thing that you can help me remember is I think we made the fees higher than staff recommended.
That's correct, and it was based off, um, the, the base tax rate that's paid off of a, a downtown fixture for a building, so it was $6,600 if that's what the overall cost would be, so that there wasn't a competition with the brick and mortar. For example, if you're a bakery and some- For example, if you're a bakery, and somebody with a food truck bakery has to pay six hundred dollars for the year and they can park in front of your bakery every day in one of our public parking spaces, that tends to aggravate the bakery. So that's why the fee is set as high as it is.
But I thought we made it higher than what y'all recommended?
We had it much lower, yes, we started it much lower.
Okay.
I think our, our highest fee at that one, one time was three hundred and fifty dollars.
It was a little higher than that, but I don't remember it's.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
And after we, we passed those fees, I came to speak with you, Trey, and you said you were gonna call around to the other cities and find out what they were making. Did you ever happen, uh, of course, that was a year ago, so.
I, I, I recall Jennifer and I both looked at that, and they were all over the place. There was no rhyme or reason that I could, that I could discern. Um, and so we just went with the policy direction was to not compete with brick and mortar.
Okay.
But we can always, we'll get it again.
I, I do kind of see a problem with the, the temporary food vendor, if, I mean, they might not be in one place very long, but they're probably doing it on a regular basis for the year. I would think we should have a year permit. I mean, if not, you guys are gonna be inspecting them every three months, which I would think would be a hassle for the staff. Or, or how are we gonna know whether their permit expired or, it's, you know, I'm just saying that I think it might be hard for, for someone to. I want to make it where people are want to abide by the rules and not make it hard. And I don't think we have the staff to go around and see how many food trucks have permits every three months. So is there something we can add to give them a yearly break?
Yeah, we could add six months or add a year, right?
I think we can add different categories, and I think one of the things, looking, and kind of doing some more research on food trucks is maybe kind of creating different categories of what it is they're selling. Because an ice cream truck that has refrigeration freezers on it is a little different than one that has gas and grease in it. Those need to be inspected more often, because what, as they drive around, connections rattle loose. Um, and that's, that's actually the biggest concern you have on food trucks is ones that are having cooking going on in the, the facility and, um, onboard, uh, fuel sources.
Excellent point, Ms. Bill.
Difference between installing a water heater and refrigerator.
Absolutely. So maybe what we could do, and, um, staff, you could make, or help us out with this, but, um, it would seem to me on the, particularly on the temporary mobile, we create a year fee and then have a three-day, three-month, or a year for that, and then have lower fees if you don't have whatever y'all, don't have a gas connection, if it's only electrical or s- whatever makes sense. And, and go and drop that down, because it would make sense if you're not having to inspect a bunch of stuff. Because the, at the end of the day, the whole point of this is to be fair to our businesses in town and to not have somebody eating spoiled food or the truck blow up while they're standing there to getting their food, right? I mean, there, there's some practical things that we're trying to accomplish. Does, y'all whispered, do you have issues?
We were just discussing, it's, it's gas and, you know, cooking oil, those kind of things, anything that's flammable, it's the, it's the flammable. So we may be able to, maybe just kind of.
Use whatever the right words are.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll figure out a fee, I think, that makes more sense on that.
Flammable, but I would say, um, what do you guys think about if the temporary mobile food permit for a year is, you guys want to make it the same as one year for the accessory to primary use? Because it's really kind of the same sort of, they're doing the same thing all the time?
That's the appropriate thing to do in my mind.
So have, create, add a temporary mobile food vendor permit for a year for twenty-four hundred dollars and then substantially less in all three of those categories if you don't have a gas and you don't have cooking oil, right? If you're, if it's a refrigerator that's running off electrical, there, there's not a whole lot of harm that you're gonna cause. Everybody okay with that? Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, I did have a question on the page prior to that, the, the vendors, though, if you didn't mind. The vendor permits. If, if they're on the, on one fifty-nine, we have like a temporary permit, it's a hundred dollars. For instance, if it was a vendor for homecoming, do they have to pay our permit plus special event permit? They're paying homecoming to be there too, is that, do they need both of those?
So my understanding is they pay the special event fee and then this hundred dollar for the inspection, basically. So this, this has to do with LP gas inspections?
Yeah, but to answer, I think the answer to your question is, homecoming uses that event as a fundraiser and they charge them to have access to the crowd. Uh, the patriotic festival, the chamber charges them.
They don't have to pay the patriotic festival and pay us, that's why I was just making sure.
No, no, they do.
They do, sorry, yes.
Unless the patrio, it, and so let's be clear about that. The hundred dollars is because we are going to do some work to make sure the truck is safe. The hundred dollars that the chamber or the homecoming, they're just getting, oh, regular vendors?
This is just regular vendors. Temporary seasonal.
It's the same thing.
I thought she was asking about a special event fee, which I think the sponsor, the organization would pay, like homecoming or, or some of the other organizations would pay that, that fee and not the vendor. Because they would fall under the umbrella of the special event if they're paying the fee.
Yeah, that's generally how it's done.
For vendor or for food trucks?
There's, so, there's one special event fee from the person putting on the event. And then if, they have food trucks at that event, it's a hundred dollars for us to inspect the LP, which is what you see here. If there are additional vendors that they are charging, that is on top of what we charge. But we're not charging each vendor three fifty for the special event, if that makes sense.
But she's talking about on page one fifty-nine, temporary seasonal or multiple vendor or events permit fee.
The non-food vendors.
Yeah, not on the food vendor, just on a regular permit. So like if we were putting none.
That is generally covered in the special event permit, that's always been my experience.
So there's general event permit, takes, gets a permit for the event. But then each vendor that they sign up doesn't have to come and get a hundred dollars from us. Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't, that wasn't what we're doing.
They come get it from us if they're a food.
Correct. Only the food vendors have to come to us. The non-food vendors that go to special events do not have to get a, an additional permit.
So when would one of these vendors that charges a hundred dollars, what kind of vendor was that?
That would similar, be similar to like a peddler. It's, uh, a vendor would be someone setting up on the street to sell, um, some, right? Like how you have vendors set up sometimes in parking lots to sell handbags or something like that, it's a vendor fee.
But wouldn't that be the individual peddler fee for thirty dollars?
Yeah. What's the difference between on page one fifty-nine, how do you get a thirty dollar permit as opposed to a hundred dollar permit?
Um, so those are overseen by the city secretary's office, but I believe a, a peddler is a traveling salesman. Like goes door to door.
Okay, so the permit for the guys that sell the lights at Christmas, what do they, do they get, we don't charge them anything? They don't get a peddler's fee? I mean, they don't get a peddler?
If they're walking with the Christmas parade, are they covered by the Christmas?
For instance, for Christmas, they are, they partner with the Main Street program, so they're part of our special event fee. If they were not a part of the special event permit, then they would have to pay an additional fee.
Okay, so if they weren't part of your event and they were just out there on the street selling stuff, would that be a peddler for thirty dollars or is it a temporary vendor for a hundred dollars? That's what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to understand the difference in these fees.
So, like, again, the way I understand it, this is why it's a great time to have a comprehensive fee review.
Gee, someone should have that idea.
But the peddler, just like, um, Ms. Cleese had mentioned, goes door to door, and that's the thirty dollar per, permit. If you're gonna set up a Christmas tree lot for sixty days, for example, that's your hundred and fifty dollar, right, permit. So you're stationary, you're at a spot, and it's seasonal, and it's just for selling Christmas trees or something. That's what I think the difference is.
There's nothing about this that says stationary or door to door or.
Again, I'm making some assumptions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, okay. This is a summary of those words.
This is all in chapter one, yeah.
Well, it's the exact same ordinance.
So my question is, if someone looked this up online, would that, would it have a footnote or something to the ordinance to tell them what to go read?
It, yes.
That's what the far-left column is, it refers back to the actual code. So these are just.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, thank you.
So these are just the fees, if you actually went back to that section of the code, it should explain.
I just wanted the public to be able to read back to what, so they could understand. Thank you, thank you.
Lots of fees.
So I have, I have a question just on a, a couple of them. So if you have a, if you have a, uh, food trailer that's stationary, that stays in one place all the time, that, that's cooking and never moves, what is that placed under? Is it a temporary mobile food vendor permit, or is it?
It's, yeah, so it's under, so if you're in a, there's kind of two situations that one can be set up at permanently. One is, um, in a mobile food court, so a site that's purposefully site-planned for a mobile, for mobile food vendors, or.
And that's six hundred dollars on page one fifty-nine?
Yep. Or you can be, um, on an existing site that has an existing business. So, um, that's, so you're, so your gas station or in front of HEB or in the McCoy's parking lot. So if they want to have a permanent, a semi-permanent vendor that's set up out there every day.
Twenty-four hundred a year.
Yeah, it's twenty-four hundred a year, we look at the site plan, make sure they're not in the fire lanes.
So that.
We do the inspections.
That's the top of page one sixty. And then I, I told you guys substantially less, but that's not really a number, I'm thinking like fifty percent. If you don't have to do LP inspections, like, I, I would, what do you guys think? I mean, it just, it.
Just the whole safety part, yeah.
Unless y'all come back and are like, no, mayor, that's a really bad idea. But, I, I mean, like, I mean substantially different, so that if you, if you're selling snow cones and you're going around from place to place, let's not charge them the same thing we're charging somebody who's frying french fries.
I do have a question, so, and I know that the county off, issues their actual food permit that does their inspection. So do we require them to have that before we give them their permit here? Okay, so they have to get that first and then come to us, okay, just want to make sure that kind of works.
That's a good question. Everybody cool? Recreation fees. Go to, gonna go ahead and add them, huh?
Yes, we are. Council, we mistakenly left the rec fees out of the proposed budget we gave you a couple of weeks ago. Um, but the, the recommendation is that we keep the fees the same as what we've been implementing for the last few months. Of a work product for next fiscal year as we continue to plan the future of City of Bastrop recreation programming is to evaluate those fees. We don't, for fiscal twenty-two, we don't suggest any substantive changes to the mix of rec programming we're, we're providing now, so we're, we're thinking we keep the, the fees the same. Uh, you'll see at the bottom of that slide, we'll be adding, we're, we're suggesting that we add a, a one-time fee. I'm not sure I like the phrase drop-in, but the idea there is if you bring a guest to a, um, to a fitness class for one time, we, you don't need to be a member. But the other, um, objective here is that if we, if we, if we host a soccer tournament or something like that, rather than have all of those participants in the tournament, um, become members, uh, immediately, we, we could charge a, a nominal fee to, to cover the cost of referees and that sort of thing. And that's a very real example because Ms. Moore's trying to schedule a soccer tournament for October.
There you go. So you, we could even do like a team fee or something, right?
We could.
It's six, six, five bucks?
An ability to.
Charge them something.
Charge them something.
So what is the range, where'd you get the five to twenty, what is that? So five dollars for a class, or is that what you're?
And, 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 uh, we're, we're actually thinking maybe ten dollars, uh, a person for participating in the, in the tournament. I guess we put twenty there just to give us a little bit of room.
Okay, I'm just curious what those fees give, thank you.
That would make sense, ten or fifteen bucks for a three-day tournament and cover all the refs and. All right, well, you guys did a great job, so they're done with their part. So Council, I scared Tracy because I've been walking around with all my tabs in my, in my budget book, but, um, she and I have already gone over a whole bunch of these. But, um, I would like to open it up to Council if you have any specific questions that you would like to go over. In the whole budget, we're now on item two D, receive questions from Council. And they're all waiting with bated breath to answer our questions.
And Council, you don't, you don't need to ask the questions tonight, right? Uh, you can come up with questions at any time between now and when we're ask you to vote on first reading on September fourteenth. And again, like the mayor just referenced, if, if it's easier for you to schedule a time to visit with, with me and, uh, and Tracy, we're, we're happy to find time to, to do that. And doing that is always beneficial if you have general questions about the budget.
I do have one question, I guess, uh, I can go ahead and ask it now, I don't know. Uh, this is doing, this would be with the recreation parks budget, um.
She, she want, did you have a page number in the budget?
No, this is, this would be an, an additional, um, recommendation or request, I guess, to ask. I was talking with some of the Parks Board members and they were mentioning, uh, and just so this might, or Councilmember Rogers, you might remember when we were talking about doing some improvements to the rodeo arena. Um, I was told that the, uh, stands themselves or the seating was needing some repair, because some of them were not safe. And that there might be some, uh, improvements that need to be made there. And I didn't see anything in the budget for that, and I'm wondering how we're going to address that, or are we going to address it? Because, um, some of the seating, uh, needed, some of them have, don't have the armrests or the structures or something like that. And, uh, this was brought to my attention by the Parks, some of the Parks Board members, so.
Well, thank you, that, that's, uh, that's a new one for me. And if the seating isn't safe, we'll certainly make sure that gets fixed. And if that means we've got a budget issue we need to bring back to Council, we will. But if, uh, we'll certainly.
Didn't B E D C fund seating?
They denied, they denied the funding for it, we made a request last year.
Okay, so we made the request and it was denied?
Right, and I don't believe it was requested again this budget year, I didn't see one. So we'll, we'll look into that.
I think it's the box seating, uh, that was, and some of the other stadium seating.
I think that's what they requested.
There's no armrest on the other seat, it's just uncomfortable.
So is it used only once a year?
Um, it's used for, um, other events throughout the year. I mean, primarily it's for, for homecoming and things like that, but they have rodeo days and several other events throughout the year that it is used, yes.
But I, I didn't think they had people in, in this, I thought.
Staff holds an open ride, um, day every.
Thursday, right?
Every other Thursday, every third Thursday, I can't remember.
Yeah, but they're riding in the arena, they're not.
As far as rental, um, the big event is homecoming, of course, and then there's usually one or maybe two more times a year that it's actually used for a bull ride or, or something like that, but it's pretty rare.
I know they were talking about having a, a weekly, like barrel racing event and a weekly roping event and, and all of that, and one guy putting on those.
Yeah, there was a vendor interested in, in providing that service, um, and then he said he would like us to buy all the equipment that he needed and we'd said no, so, um, that, that, that went away.
As I recall, when the request came to B D C, the reason that it was denied was because it was money that would, was not be utilized on a, on a regular basis. And it was more of, instead of fifty, fifty thousand, and it was fifty thousand dollars, instead of a little bit here and a little bit there, um, and, oh, she's giving me, she's giving me intense eyes. I think that it was back to come back with a plan, and if there, if it was gonna be utilized more often and there could be an economic reason for doing it, that B D C would take another look at that request. But doing it for a once-a-year event, they said no. Councilmember Rogers?
I was just gonna correct Trey, when those, the other vendor wanted to use it, you said you would find a tractor and you had one. And then it got dropped, I'm just saying.
This was the newest, um, the rodeo, right, the most recent person that came in?
I didn't know we had a new person.
Yeah, there was a new person, wanted to do, um, weekly, weekly, um, and I'm probably.
Barrel racing?
Roping, there you go.
Oh, I didn't know that, I just knew the old person, all they wanted was a tractor, and you told me you'd find it and you had it? And I, then I'd hear nothing else, so.
Right, and, and.
There are people that want to use the rodeo arena, we're just not allowing them to use it.
Right.
We, we would allow them to use it, they are not interested in paying the fees for the tractor. That's the problem, that's where we, that's where we continue to have a problem.
My point of being is there's a city park not being used, it's just rotting out there. It would be better for somebody to use it.
Right, or.
And they would be willing to repair some of those things, right?
We could absolutely have a, another discussion on the rodeo arena.
I've had that discussion with you guys three times now.
Right.
I'm just saying.
There never seems to be any interest as a group. There never seems to be any interest as a group and a body from the city council to address the issues at the rodeo arena.
I agree.
There's individual people that are interested in it, but as a council as a whole, we've continued to push this to the side. We're happy to talk about it whenever you want.
And if we have a safety problem out there right now, we'll, we'll address it. And maybe that's, maybe that's limiting access to the, the dangerous area. This, again, this is-
New to you tonight.
This is new to me. And so if we've got a safety problem, we'll deal with it.
Yeah, and safety is different than inconvenient, right? Like, you know, sitting in a seat with a crack in it is diff, is, so that, that's what we're differentiating. We certainly don't want anybody to be in an unsafe situation, but if there's a crack in the seat, you, you know what I mean? There's, there's two different issues to address. But there's the bigger, bigger issue, to Trey's point of, there's never been a real, that's the thing we want to go tackle. But wouldn't that be included in our Parks Master Plan?
That is where I was going.
Which we have funded, which can be one of the things that we consider along with everything else.
So if you'll remember, the Parks Board last year brought a recommendation of several things that could happen at Mayfest. One was a sports complex, one was the rodeo arena, and that is the purpose of funding the, the feasibility study for the sports complex and the Parks Master Plan.
And just to be, just to be clear, the Parks Master Plan is in the plan for next fiscal year. We, we didn't fund it directly. We're, we're hoping that that's grant-funded and we're still pursuing that.
I think that'll address the needs of what the Parks Board, some of the other citizens have been talking about, putting it in the plan. And at least we'll be taking some action in some positive direction so that they won't feel like it's, they're being ignored.
Yeah. So I understood you correctly. I said that they, the guy just backed out that wanted to do those weekly or monthly events? He just decided not to do them anymore?
Correct. He, he decided not to continue if there were going to be fees, yeah. Right. If there, the, the problem is, we can't allow someone, the general public, to use city equipment, right? It's not good for the insurance, it's, it's a big no-no. So there is a fee associated with that, to rent out the tractor and recovery of the water, things of that nature. And what he was interested in holding some small-team roping events, but not, not actually pay any fees. So we, that went away.
Yeah, because that, there's multiple people that I've talked to that would like to, to rent it. But if there, if it's a safety thing because they can't use a tractor or we can't supply staff to use the tractor to redo the soil or something like that?
We, we can supply them, they don't want to pay the fees. And the fees are exactly the same fees they were when it was ran by the Homecoming Committee. There's no increase in fees. We have not increased them since we took ownership.
So that's still on the table if somebody wants to do it.
Right. And, and we'll review for the safety issue.
Okay.
In the seats, if there are, or if they're just cracked.
I'm with Dr. Sill. That's a great park that we, that could be utilized, it's not utilized but once a year.
So the Parks Master Plan's definitely the, the place to address that.
Yeah.
Okay, let's get back to, Councilmember Jackson, other budget questions? No? Councilmember Crouch, do you have budget questions?
I, no, not right now, I don't. I do, but I'm not addressing that.
Mayor Protim Nelson? He's looking at his tabs.
A lot of my questions were answered during, during the presentation. I do have, I, I do have a question or a series of questions that I, that I want to provide to the city manager and not, to get his fill. Maybe a misunderstanding on my part. So I have no questions at this point.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Peterson?
Really, you're going to leave me out here just answering my questions?
Looks like it.
I'll support you.
Oh, my God, you guys kill me. Kill me. I do have a question about the, Tracy, I reached out to you about the 35% dependent coverage? And you, you know, you explained to me that it's under organizational. Do we have a dollar amount, what that is, or what we're thinking it might be?
Yeah, it's listed in the enhancements. It's 140,000, and that's purely an estimate because we don't know how many will take advantage of that once we turn that on.
But we-
We have taken a poll of staff and we have come up with a, an educated estimate.
Educated, yes. I mean, we, we already know how many are buying-
We know how many are on there now, which is not very many.
Right.
But if we offer some participation to it, then more people may jump on and we, we can't really predict how many-
Yeah, I didn't show why, I just was curious what that-
But we did put 140,000 as the number.
That makes sense. I was just curious what that number was that you had in your head.
Yeah, that makes sense. Everybody's at home doing their own math, right, of how much-
Yeah, I think it's listed under the enhancements.
Well, that was that tab.
That, that was kind of a question that I, just out of curiosity, was going to ask is, is, we do these every year, and what, what is the variation of budget to budget to budget? On average?
That is really hard to answer.
I mean, it just depends on the needs. That's really what drives the budget. So it depends on-
I would say this fiscal year is not typical, right? I made the comment when I presented the budget a few weeks ago that-
You've never asked for six.
I've, I've never added six positions to the general fund in, in one year before. And we're, and so, so there's, there's this, there's a significant expenditure increase in this year's budget. I'm not remembering what it is actually off the top of my head, but that's not going to track comparatively to prior years. And, and as Tracy was just saying, that's, that's absolutely because of the need. In fact, I think we could, we could justify more. I know we could, I know we could justify more firefighters. At some point in the near-term horizon, we'll, we'll certainly need to add more firefighters. We're going to continue to pay a lot of attention to police staffing. Chief Nagy does a great job of, of looking at the numbers and making sure everything is covered. And right now, I think we enjoy not, not real high crime rates and our response times are really good. But when that changes because of population growth or because of additional traffic congestion, we'll need to be able to react to that. If we, if we continue to grow and stretch the, the, the planning department and specifically the code enforcement area, we, we added one FTE to this year's budget. Arguably, we'll need to add more, I think, as, as time goes on.
One reference point, Councilmember Crouch, is to look at page 51. It's really weird if you look at totals because CIP projects-
Yeah.
Are so different from year to year. But the general fund summary, general funds kind of a, that's a majority of it and that's kind of, so you can see that in 2020, it was 12.9. In 2021, it looks like we're going to be at 14.6, and this proposed budget is 15.4. So that, that gives you a, a pretty good feel for how they go.
I'd call your attention to page, and I think, I think we did a pretty good job with our, our budget overview and what we called the, the budget in brief. There's some, there's some summaries in there. There's a chart on page 11, which talks about the revenue increase in the general fund and, and what that's all about. But yeah, there's the, there's no doubt, we're, we're spending more and we're taking more in for next fiscal year. I think there's, there's good news in all of this. I think that we are keeping the tax rate flat. And I think I mentioned this before, a, a bullet point I'd share with people who are asking about this budget and why the tax rate's not any lower is we're, we're, we're going to fix some streets. And if, if, to the extent I hear concerns from the general public about city service delivery, that's, that's chief among them. I think people are happy with our public safety response. I think people think we communicate with them pretty well. I think we're doing a tremendous job in the, in the planning department. Our, our streets are not what we want them to be, and it's important that we invest in that and, and make sure our, our debt structure can stand some additional load in a few years when we, I, I think we ought to implement a pretty extensive street program. So it, given, given what all those needs are in the future, saying the tax rate's not increasing is pretty significant. Saying for the average person, their tax burden is going up $95 is, again, I think a, a pretty good deal.
Well-
Understanding that we've got some utility fees going up too.
But I also want to talk about, we have an outstanding police department, and it's one thing that, we've done a great job of, I'm glad that we're doing the shift inferential and the, the day-to-day, their day-to-day interaction is one thing. But it was noted that there was a 4,000-hour backlog of investigations.
And that's why we're adding two detectives.
And that's why we're adding two detectives. So I, the two detectives to resolve cases and the streets, for me, are the two really big drivers of the budget.
Yeah. The reason I ask was just because of what you were saying, the general fund, and, because it was to jump so much. And I, I knew that it, I just thought it was an inconsistent year and it just, I know Tracy's been here a long time and if that's just, I was thinking the budget was hovering around more $12 million a year than $15 million a year.
It is. It is an inconsistent year.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's why I asked the question.
That may become our new base. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, I want to finish my question.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's all right.
Keep going.
I just had a question because I'm probably reading it wrong on page 142, 143. It's the, the hot funds breakdown of expenditures. The bottom line looks like it's pretty close to what we did last year, but all of the personnel costs have been taken out? Is that correct?
Yes, we've moved all personnel to the general fund.
So we're spending the same amount of money, give or take some dollars?
Well, the hot funds-
The transfer.
Yeah, the hot funds are, so just to clarify, all the splits of staff and allocations that we had, we wanted to kind of make that a little bit cleaner. And so the work that staff does in support of hot-funded events or the convention center or Main Street, that fund will actually pay an administrative overhead contribution, which is included in here. So we've pulled the people out, so your personnel costs have gone down, but your administrative support, your overhead allocation is still going to be in that fund, which is why the bottom line didn't change by all that much.
Okay. And I was wondering if there was a way I can get a little bit more on the contractual service for that?
So the 1.3 is made up of, visit Bastrop. It's made up of the chart that's on page 141.
Hold on.
The 372, 930 that adds up, and that'll change a little bit.
Because we just increased that a little bit tonight.
Right.
And then if you look under the contractual service, there's 142,000 that covers the contract that we have with the venue. They do the hotel, they're our consultant for hotel collections, and also the administrative support.
Okay.
There's an administrative support in that organizational division.
So, so that's awesome. That, and that's the contractual services under the hot fund?
And I added the 142. I'll add the dollar amount when I type the final book, just to-
So the contractual hot fund under hospitality downtown, that was, that's the-
There is also a tran, there's an overhead allocation that comes out of that. So instead of it being in personnel, it's coming out of contractual services.
So the 127, 113 going to 309, 748. Tell me why that's different, the contractual services under hospitality and downtown?
So there used to be personnel up in convention center. Now there's an overhead allocation coming out of contractual services.
So that 245, 382 that went to zero, that 245's now down in the line that went to 309?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay. And is that the same thing that happened in Main Street where the 106 went to zero and the 115 went to 112?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And I also, I provided, I, I found a better way to run the detail. So I provided Ann that better report today and she was going to put it in y'all's Dropbox.
Yeah. Jesse had my pad, so I couldn't, she did tell-
No, that's fine, but it, I found a better way to run it that's so much cleaner. So it'll be a lot easier to read.
So then, so now personnel fees are in that contractual services?
Yeah, instead of there actually being personnel allocated to this fund, there is now just an overhead or an administrative support that's coming out. So we're seeing that in the general fund side as a, as a transfer in. Not a transfer in, it's an offset of expenses.
But on this page that we're looking at, on page 142, it's in contractual services?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, did you want to, are you? Councilmember Rogers, was that your last question or?
Yes, that answered the question. I just thought contractual services were things that we contracted out and I, I'm not understanding why personnel is a contract out, but whatever makes sense to you.
Yeah, it's more of where that overhead allocation account lives. It's the same with water, wastewater and BP and L as well. That's where that account lives, is contractual services.
So can you, under the heading up here, can you add that to your contractual service? Because at the top, you just say that's what it just does, the-
That one sentence. If you can add some few words.
Provide administrative support.
I mean, that would explain it for somebody, a little bit more. Thank you.
We just don't want to ask you the same question again.
Over and over and over and over, yeah.
Mayor, did you, did you want to add, ask the question that we talked about earlier today about the, the transfer into the street maintenance? I just wanted to clarify, that would be a major change in the final book?
Um, yeah.
Do you want me to cover that?
Go ahead.
Does that change? Okay, so in this proposed budget, we were taking the balance that was left over with the 2018 sort of CO and transferring into street maintenance. And so the conversation earlier was the concern that we needed to make sure we had the match for the old Iron Bridge, if indeed we needed that match for a grant. So we were going to cancel out that transfer out and the transfer in and get rid of that. So that will be changes. And when I do my staff report for the final budget, I will highlight all of the changes from this version to that version. Not, not word changes, but like dollar changes, just so you know.
Mayor Protim, didn't you have a typo you wanted to say?
Oh, yeah. There was a typo. I hate to even bring it up.
He, he said he was being me and he wanted to brag that he found a typo. Go ahead.
But unfortunately, I had to find the typo, so.
You only found one?
It was allowed. Y'all spelled it A-L-O-U-D instead of A-L-L-O-W-E-D.
So there's-
He's very proud of himself.
Still my thunder.
Yep. All right, council. So we have a workshop scheduled for tomorrow night. Does anyone feel the need to come back for tomorrow night? Or, because what we can do, if we have questions, if we've got more questions or if we want a time to go over it again, we can do a, start at 5:30 on, you know, one of the September, the first September meeting or, or even next meeting if we want to give them a chance to update some of this stuff and, and put it in the packet where we can look at it or we are scheduled to meet tomorrow night. Does anyone feel a need to meet tomorrow night? Councilmember Peterson?
I can't see it right now, Mayor, because I didn't have any questions. I think everybody covered everything pretty well to make it understandable for all of us. So I think tonight went very well.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers? She says no count. Mayor Protim Nelson? No need? Councilmember Crouch?
I, I don't, I don't see a need.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
The gift of time we give to staff, does that mean y'all will be done with the feast at, I'm just kidding.
I did have a question, though.
Absolutely. We're not done.
On the, on, on the parks, and maybe I'm just totally missing it in here, I didn't see a specific line item for park improvements. So say, for example, shade structure.
Page one forty-six.
We have a line item in the CIP, I'm sorry.
We, we have a line item in the CIP for replacing shade structures.
Not replacing them, just putting, putting, having them.
It's, page one forty-six, it's fifty thousand and they haven't flushed out the details, so it could be replace or new or.
Well, Mr., Mr. Crouch makes a, a relevant point. We, we don't have budget for adding them. That would be, that would be new and different. That would be in, in addition.
Yeah, and I, I think that's something we ought to consider. Because there's, there's a lot of our, well, the majority of them don't have a shade structure on them. And that keeps a lot of people from going to the park. So, and we've talked about that in the Parks Board for years about getting them in the, it was always nixed because they were eighty thousand dollars or somebody threw out a number of eighty thousand dollars. And I, I don't know where that number came from, maybe a previous structure that we put. But I know that when we had a student or youth member, got the one put up at Bob Brown Park for almost nothing. And so when, when my family members come into town to visit, that's the first thing that they say. Why don't you have a shade structure over your park so I can take my kid out and let him swing on the swing without, without burning up? And if there's some way we could look at that and see if there's maybe some funding for at least one of the major parks to, to cover the structure with a shade structure.
Might that be something for the Park Master Plan as well? Because there may be grants for some of that stuff. And the Parks Board could certainly investigate grants for shade structures?
Yeah, so we don't wait fifteen years to do it. Because I think it was in the two thousand eight plan and then the two thousand fifteen plan. And I guess we could, as long as we move it on and.
I was going to mention that also, but something I was going to mention too, but I'll, I'll get with the city manager, I guess we talked to him about that too, is because of grants and things like that, I think we're not, we're not involved with the Texas Recreation and Parks Group, which is our statewide organization. And that's a good way of networking and finding out about grants and other opportunities and also finding out a lot about that. And I wish we were a member, we used to be a member years ago. And I know our surrounding cities are members, so I would hope that we would think about that. It's not that, I mean, for a city our size, that's not that much for a membership.
Uh, Councilmember Jackson, I did put in the recreation budget next year for us to join that through both. It will include parks as well. It'll be.
Excellent.
Yes, sir.
And, and we can, to, to Mr. Crouch's point, we, we can certainly pursue some grant funding for that sort of thing. LCR, LCR A grants that come around once a year come, come to mind. And so we'll, we'll see what we can do in that regard.
Councilmember Crouch, other questions?
Yes, that was it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rogers? I just want to comment on Councilmember Crouch's shade idea. I do think that would actually fall under safety too with the, the equipment getting hot in the sun. You know, for the kids to get on some of that equipment when it's hot, I would think it would actually be a help with the safety of, of the playground. I know they don't make metal slides you burn your booty on anymore, but they're still hot equipment.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yeah, yeah, and kind of, kind of to Councilmember Rogers' point, I think it's been a hallmark of thi, of this council that when we identify an issue, identify a problem, identify improvements that have been made in the city, we move on it. We also have the recognition that some of these things move quite slowly. And to Councilmember Crouch's point, it was in the two thousand five plan, two thousand eight plan. It wasn't in the twenty-seventeen plan when I came on, on the, on the council. So I'm glad you're bringing that up. But I think that we need to look at park improvement three different ways, running repairs, short-term fixes and then long-term fixes, which our master plan, our Parks Master Plan, is going to address. So I, I really appreciate that. Can I say one of the things, Mayor Protim, before we, before we leave?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I want to compliment staff on the deep dive that y'all have already done on, onto the fees and sign stuff. That's a lot of work. And I, I know we haven't fin, come up with a finished project, uh, product. But I really, really appreciate the deep dive that y'all have taken into it so far, a lot of detail, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the budget format is, hopefully, a lot of that's coming from your, from your software and things are getting easier on you guys. But this, the, the fact that it's not three inches thick and the, the layout of the departments and I had, when I started in it, I had some questions and I told the city manager, some of it's just getting used to a different layout. You know, things aren't exactly in the same place. But that's fine because that gives you a, it, it's helpful to look with a new set of eyes on, on all of the figures. So, council, how about we give these hard-working folks a round of applause? Thank you, guys, very, very much, to you and your staffs. Because I know you guys put a lot of time in it, but I also know you have some help. So, Councilmember Peterson, I think we're on the last item. Would you like to make a motion?
I certainly would, Mayor. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's eight oh five. I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
And a second from Councilmember Rogers and Councilmember Crouch. And we are adjourned. Everyone be careful this evening. Thank you.